All right. Welcome back, everyone. We'll continue with our next item. It was supposed to be our 9:20 a.m. It's still item 6B. Public hearing consideration of ordinance to amend Chapter 21, Article 27 of the Lake County Code regarding commercial cannabis regulation. And staff, whenever you're ready.
Yes, Director Turner. Yep, there she is.
Yeah, Mireia Turner, Community Development Director. Sorry, I'm virtual today. I'm a little under the weather. Also, Commissioner Field did text and say that she's running a little bit late, but she will be here shortly. So the item you have before you today is an order, a draft ordinance that is making amendments to the existing cannabis regulations currently housed in Article 27. At the last meeting with the board, the board approved splitting the overall update of cannabis regulations into two portions. The first being kind of like the low-hanging fruit stuff that were just amendments to Article 27 that staff felt comfortable, all qualified with the common sense exemption. And so that list is bullet pointed on the first page of your staff report, but I'll just go through it real quick. It's setbacks from off-site residences, which again is how the board directed us to deal with odor impacts. We did include a maximum canopy, applicant and property owner identification and background checks. This was syncing with the state at the request of the treasurer tax collector. Operating hours, 10-year permit duration and renewal, doing away with the 10-year permit duration. Opt-out and reduced canopy options. Exclusion areas, that one included the setback from the lake, considering the lake. Farmland protection zone. As far as development standards, the board has more than once let staff know that they have no interest in amending the farmland protection zones. Repairing setbacks, that was to sync with the water board. Annual performance review reports and process. This has been a topic of conversation a couple times, mentioned a couple times in the planning commission. And we'll go over that change shortly. Incomplete and abandoned applications. This is allowing staff to consider them abandoned and so that they don't stay on our timetable anymore. Setbacks from hemp cultivation. And this was to help staff identify easily or easily differentiate the difference between the hemp cultivation and the canopy of commercial cannabis. Metric track and trace tags. This is changing to sync with the state. We were behind. The state doesn't require storage of those, but we were still requiring them for like seven years. So this syncs with the state. And then there are a couple things that I saw as I was preparing the draft ordinance and reviewing Article 27. The Article 27 had community development listed as another department reviewing background checks. And that review takes place in the sheriff's office. So I just made that clarification, too. So if you move on the staff report to the first section, you'll see the table which lists the topics that are bullet pointed as well as the changes that are made to the ordinance. This was to help it make it a little easier for everybody, commission and public, to digest because reading ordinances is a lot of governmentese. So you'll see on page two of your staff report, the setbacks from off-site residences. The board wanted a tiered system based on size of canopy. And so the smaller ones, we kept at the 200. But then we increased to 500. You'll see with the type three, that's the one acre outdoor or half acre, almost half acre indoor or mixed light. And then went up to 1,000 for type five. Type five is a new license offered at the state. This just means over one acre outdoor or the other mixed light indoor. And so we added the type five permit here since it's just an administrative change, really. We're already allowing the clustering and the application or the projects to include over one acre. Anyway, so type five just sort of syncs with the state license. But if you look over on the far right column and that type five, you'll see that we included a maximum of five acres. Or no, sorry, 20 acres for total canopy. That's down on that bottom line. Then the next section in the code that's affected for that also has a setback is for processors. That's located in a different section of the code. And so we put a 1,000-foot setback from processors. Next applicant and property owner identification and background check. You'll see in that front section that it's, we're just requiring the same information that the California code, Canvas code requires. Additionally, not only are we requiring that same information, but we're adding the same requirements for property owners. And then most of the rest of page two and all of page three is, and part of page four is everywhere that that has to be updated. And that was also the inclusion of the property owners. Let's see, keep going, keep going. Yep, still all property owners in various parts of the code.
I'm sorry, say that again. Two, three, and part of four all has to be updated? Is that what you said? I'm sorry.
No, pages of, I'm going by the staff report.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So yeah, following the staff report shows different areas in the code where we did make those amendments to include the property owner information as well as sync the type of information we require syncing that with the state.
Thank you.
Next, page four. Next topic is operating hours. This was a recommendation from the task force that was approved in concept by the board. And that was changing, we had like a one-liner, like seven to seven or something like that. And so it's fleshed out now to differentiate between construction hours, operational hours, and delivery hours. And that is sinking more like regular, other conventional agricultural uses. Next page. Removal of the 10-year term duration for the permits and adding the opt-out and reduced canopy. So removal of that 10-year term limit, permit life limit, pretty much, helps to make cannabis use permits similar to other types of use permits. And then the opt-out and reduced canopy were two processes that were brought in internally. And this is the formalizing of those. Close that email so you guys don't have to listen. Okay. And so that shows those, it also adds a deadline of notification to staff for opt-out and reduced canopy of June 1st. This is, this helps us then to manage internal processes, communications between CDD and treasurer tax collector. So the tax collector knows how much to assess, how much canopy they can expect. And then they send out their tax bills based on that information. And then there were three other sections that referred to the 10-year term limit or the actual, the renewal of permits. And the renewal is no longer necessary since there's no expiration date. The permits would then be like any other use permit and expire after two years of non-use or if they needed revocation. Also modification of the permits would be handled by using other parts of the zoning ordinance that regulate those. Exclusion areas, you'll see in bold, including Clear Lake at 7.79 Ramsey. Farmland protection zone. This was to add the anchor points for construction. And we did appreciate Commissioner Rosenthal's email for questions regarding additional information for like definitions of stuff. So Mary has that available for anchor points. Mary, did you want to type in on that one?
In discussions with the chief building official this morning, the Anchor Point Foundation definition from the department is points on a greenhouse structure that securely fasten the structure to the ground to prevent shifting settling and potential failures that could arise from external forces or environmental conditions.
Thank you. The site plant, next section is site plan repairing setbacks. And we added information that you'll see in bold to refer to the statewide Resources Quality Control Board. We didn't add, I did not add the table into the ordinance because I wanted to keep us a little more nimble should those repairing setbacks change at the state water board. But we do plan to include the table as part of like an internal document that'll go to prospective applicants. Next one, annual performance review reports. As the planning commission is well aware, you have not done a review on an annual basis of all the over 120 cannabis use permits that we have. And it's really not, I, feel free to disagree with me because, because we, you know, we haven't had a discussion about this. I chose today, like this, this item to be sort of that launch point of that discussion. But it's not feasible. I don't consider it feasible for you to have to do a review of all the materials that do come in on an annual basis on these cannabis permits. We, you'd never get anything else done. We probably have to schedule additional meetings. So we're changing that to the review that will be done internally by staff. We are already performing a lot of this review prior to our annual compliance monitoring site visits. And so then to make sure that the spirit of having the review by the planning commission is still covered in the regulations, we would remain with the modifications. Any modifications that need to be done would go through the same modification permit process that we have right now. If we discover problems or issues, we bring them to either you or to the board through a revocation or a modification process. But I wanted to pause here in case you had any input that you wanted specific to this item.
Yes, I have a few questions or comments on that part. I understand for the, you know, the workload and the reviewing time that it might take to bring those to our attention in the meeting. But would it be possible maybe to have like, at the end of the year, prior to the new season, to kind of have like a performance of overall, all the approved? Just even just a number, like, okay, this, this many were approved this year. It brings the total amount to this many active in, you know, under our review. Certain amount, you know, opted out. And then, you know, maybe even acreage amounts. Like we started off with, the previous year, we had a total amount of acreage of X number because these people opted out. Now it's reduced to this, just to kind of see like a trend. And if, you know, if, for example, if there's a drought, we saw a reduction or there was an increase, I mean, there wouldn't be an increase because we're, we, you know, we have, the permits that are applied, they have a certain amount. But I think it would just be interesting for us to visualize like what's actually going on in terms of like performance from, from these applications.
I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And maybe we could do it, maybe we could do it at every meeting, what has been done since the last meeting or monthly or something like that? Because.
Well, you know, an annual report is actually a really great idea because the annual ag report or crop report does, still doesn't include cannabis yet. And so that would, that type of information could be very informative to the board as well. Monthly might be a, I think that you would get a better idea of overall activity if it's annual. Because we just don't get that kind of data monthly anyway. But we do have, we are hot and heavy in review and site monitoring over the summer.
Yeah, do you have a, do you have a set time during the year when you go out and do annual inspections?
Yes. And Mary can actually speak to that. She, she kind of runs the inspections.
So yes, there is a set time. According to Article 27, we do need to come for annual compliance monitoring site visits during the growing season. Because the majority of the projects that we have are outdoor cultivation, we do go through the summer season and we schedule all of our projects through the summer season. Annual inspection kickoff is on June 1st. This is when compliance monitoring reports are due and the fees are due as well. That's why we're tying that June 1st date into the opt-out and request to reduce as well. So we have the month of June collectively, well, I do, to tally up all of the projects that will be reducing their canopy or opting out. Then I'll create the schedule. And at that time, the schedule can be shared with, you know, commissioners if they wish to join us during annual inspections for any specific project. We just ask that we do not have more than two commissioners present at any site due to the Brown Act compliance. We would have to notify that we were having a meeting if we did do that. So yes, it is during the summer season when most of our farms are in full operation in conjunction with that June 1st deadline. Our annual inspections typically go through September, mid-September at the latest. However, we do prefer to go to the processing facilities a little bit later. That way we can see them in full swing of operations after harvest has occurred. That way we can check for things like odor and the processing facility's regular standards and their conditions of approval.
So what is your cadence in putting together all the data that you gathered that would be reasonable then to bring it? Would December or January for the prior year be a reasonable month to say, look at for scheduling us to look at the data that you've collected?
Yes, that would be reasonable because most of that information is due to the tax collector in regards to the square foot of canopy prior to that. However, we do request that we would have enough time to do follow-up for any items that we found out of compliance where there would potentially be corrective actions with enough time for our permittees to correct those actions. Things like that would be failure to register with the ag department with the pesticide regulation requirements, building permit requirements, anything that might take a little bit of time. So I do believe coming back in either November or December would provide ample time for us to provide you with follow-up. And just so I can capture what you're looking for when we're talking data points and metric, we're looking for the total number of projects, both pending and approved. You would like to know how many were operating, how many had opted out, and the total square footage of what was requested to be reduced for that year. And then additionally, I'm assuming that you would also like to know if any violations, notices of violation had been prepared by the code enforcement division? Would that suffice?
Well, my question is, what's the objective of having the planning commission review things? And to me, it seems like it, it would be on an individual basis, not a summary. So I think that if, if we have a responsibility as a commission to review things, we should be made aware of any problems immediately. And so, I mean, within a month would be adequate, it seems to me. But we're ineffective if it's year's end. So maybe some clarity there.
This ordinance is changing the responsibility for reviewing these annual reports from the planning commission to community development department.
I think what we're saying is that maybe perhaps we don't want to see that happen. Or maybe in a different, in a different way.
Yeah, I'm wondering who's making that decision? And is that the most effective way of managing this?
That would be me, since I wrote the ordinance. So, but again, I just did this as a launch point for this exact discussion that we're having now. So this is good.
Well, it seems to me that it would be more effective as far as management policy to do it in a timely manner. So much as I love coming to meetings, I, I, I think that would be more effective if, if the planning commission were more involved in the process.
Okay, so yeah, so I'll add to that. Not that I want to review every, every project at all, but then when I hear the, Ms. Claiborne talk about, you know, if we schedule it for November, then we're talking another year before we see anything. I'm feeling as a planning commissioner at not getting feedback, it's more difficult for me to engage in, in reviewing the ordinance. And to be quite honest, you know, as far as I would rather actually see the entire ordinance and review it rather than the bits and pieces if it is my responsibility to approve a cannabis ordinance, you know, and the updates to the cannabis ordinance.
Are you talking about the ordinance, the draft ordinance that was attached to this agenda item? That you want to see that one? Should have been in your packet.
Well, I want to look at the entire ordinance, so which I know is online. So that's kind of a different subject. But the main thing here is that I do want to be more engaged if I'm in a role where I need to make decisions and we're, you know, of course, making decisions on projects. So the more engaged that we can be and we can know a little bit more about the challenges of, of this industry so that we can, you know, help to streamline, you know, or, or help in working through, since that's kind of the task that's put on our shoulders, you know, to, to approve projects. And in this case here, we have the cannabis ordinance, the update coming before us, the elements that are coming before us today as well as in the future. Yeah, I need, I need to be more engaged.
Commissioners, if I may, can I just jump in for a moment? When we receive the annual performance reports, those do contain confidential information. They have live scan background check information. They have government-issued IDs. Those things would need to be redacted from the performance reports prior to any review. So staff would respectfully request that there would be enough time for us to go through each of those documents and redact that information should you.
I have a different thought, actually. Since, since the planning commission is looking to see if we're encountering any challenges with, you know, with what we're getting or with what activity is taking place in, as it pertains to the code, we have inspection reports that are generated at every compliance monitoring site visit that are the way that we substantiate whether or not what's actually there and in operation matches what's been approved. If you want, we can start. If you want, we can start um, just like going over or giving you guys um, or attaching to an agenda just as a, as an update during the harvest, all of those inspection reports. Because those are public record anyway.
I think that would be perfect.
That would be helpful. The, the other, the other part is we are the ones, we, we, the commission are making a decision and so we're responsible for saying yes or no to a project. And it's important for us to see how that has rolled out. Not only are, are the project people complying with the agreement, it's also a learning process to us. If we agreed, uh, this one particular thing might be a good, a, a good idea, we're hesitant or want, and then we see sort of like in real life that it either works or doesn't work. It adds to our lexicon of understanding as projects come before us. How, how can we do better? And I think to take us out of any of the follow-up and accountability, it, it's, it's an odd kind of, we approve it and then it just goes off. And so we, we neither learn from it, or if there's an issue, then they turn around, look at us and go, well, you said yes, or you said no. So I, I think to take us out of any sort of participatory thing, and I'm not sure a hundred percent how, how we key into that, I mean, got some suggestions here, but there's got to be a, a circle back to us regarding the, the project. And, and, and of course, we're talking about cannabis now, but if we agree.
Right, we don't do that for any other use.
Well, and, and uh, and that's a wonderment, and of course, that's adding to our workload, okay. Shoot me later, but um, you know, anytime uh, I'm on other boards and if, if we have a fiduciary uh, responsibility for the organization and we don't know who's spending the money, when they're spending it, what's going on. You know, it's like, what are we doing here? So I think that we need to figure out some, some process, we can figure out some cadence, I mean, we're all smart.
Oh, sure, and, and that doesn't actually require any amendments to the draft ordinance that you see in front of you. We can handle that just as like a, an annual, just as like a, an update, a staff-related update. So how about this year? Let's try it, let's try just having like a standing item on the agenda in those, um, in those, maybe the fall months. Uh, where we're going to go over with you. Uh, this is what we do, you know, these are the inspection reports that we've gotten, this is what we're seeing out there. Uh, and let's see if, if that works and if not, we'll try something else, you know, we can add or, or take away. Because I don't want you to feel disconnected or disenfranchised, that's not the goal.
So I'm, I'm not looking for individual information or, or even a copy of the individual reports. I would agree with, with our chair, you know, I'm looking, um, I would be satisfied with a summary. However, waiting till next fall to get a summary is problematic, given, in my mind, as far as given, you know, what's, what's before us with the uh, general plan updates, the area plan updates and the uh, cannabis update, the cannabis ordinance update. Yeah.
I think it's very.
We can start with an update, uh, like, like an, uh, a summary of this past year's stuff with an update in a January meeting.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, let's do that. Mary, write that down.
Can I say something? I think part of the um, presenting it to the planning commission process, the possibly most important part of it is public review. And I, you know, this is a democracy theoretically. And I think it's really important that the public is able to see in an easy way what's going on. So I, for that reason, um, I'd really like to see monthly um, discussions.
So I would suggest for this particular one on page five of the uh, staff recommendation is that the play, that we leave it as it is. It's reviewed by, by the planning commission. And the process by which the planning commission is, is the operating process. And so the planning commission can then, as, as modes of operation, doesn't have to be part of the of the uh, the ordinance, exactly how that's going to be done. That can be determined by the planning commission in, in concert with the planning department. The process by which those reviews are, are done. What cadence are done, what format are done? And I agree, we don't need to know, you know, who, who's who and, you know, what they've been through, whatever. We just need to know the processing and the, and the application of the operation. So I would suggest we do not, the bottom page, what I counted was five. We do not change uh, the cross-out and, uh, we don't do that. We don't make that change.
So, and I'm going to disagree with my fellow commissioner, um, only because I really have a pet peeve with, with this continuing to be set forth in the conditions of approval or, you know, in, in documents and we're not fulfilling that. So I don't like something to be put into the permit process and it's not happening, so.
I'm thinking we're saying, we don't like that, so let's, let's act on that. Let's create a plan, let's plot a plan to address that so that when we say we're going to review it, it does happen.
And commissioners, if I may, this section is specific to the annual performance review report.
Correct.
And that is the portion in which I had stated there is confidential information that staff would have to redact and it would take some time for staff to pull that from there. Additionally, we don't conclude annual inspections until the duration of fall. So what I'm understanding is you would like to see these in, in progress as they're received during the duration of inspections and we may not have some of that data available until we've concluded with all of the inspections. If you want to look at both of those metrics at the same time, the performance report and the annual inspection, because these are two separate documents. One of them is provided to us by June first, it should be provided to us by June first, sometimes we have to chase them. And that is the um, permittee submitted documentation. The inspection report is the staff-generated documentation, so these are coming in at separate times.
And as I say, we work with the cadence of what your requi- requirements are. We don't have to say it's got to be here, whether or not you can meet that, we want to work with you to put together a plan that is both workable for you and gives the information that we need in as timely a fashion as possible. And redacted how it needs to be.
So what I'm hearing then is that uh, the, and I, I didn't look for numbers of nods, but the commission is saying that they don't, they don't recommend this particular amendment to the ordinance, they want it to, you want it to stay the same.
Correct. Oh.
Okay, that's one nod, listen too.
Well, or just, are you saying we just have to, we have to actually do what we say we're going to do? Is that where you're, is that where you're?
Yes, we do, but I guess in the effort of streamlining um, the process, which to me, the overall uh, update of the cannabis ordinance was kind of about. Also, I guess I don't want to overburden the, the uh, CDD uh, with extra work. So nor do I want to overburden myself. But I, for me, or whatever, I would agree with the, the recommendation that our chair made earlier uh, for more of a summary review. I would just like that summary review to happen sooner than next fall, than the fall of two thousand twenty-six. I would like to have our, because this has been so delayed, we've never gotten a report um, from any cannabis project other than the one, uh, one that was brought before us for revocation. I, I feel like I'm, I'm missing a gap of information there of what is working and what is not working as far as in our county or where we're having challenges, where permit, permittees are having challenges, as well as where neighbors are having challenges, so.
So what I'm reading is that if we um, say no to this proposed change, all we're doing is saying instead of um, presenting the annual review to the QCD, it's, it is presented annually to the planning commission. And so I would agree with Sharon that yes, we should not approve of that change. Continue to hear a, an annual report, but not only that, I'm saying, hey, it would be great to hear what's going on every month in an informal way. I'm not saying we write it into the ordinance.
Right.
Okay.
I would agree with just staff recommendation as it is uh, with the annual report.
Okay.
Um, for example, yeah, sorry, uh, for example, the uh, the data that we collect this year. Um, now it's, you know, this is our last meeting, so it's not going to happen this month. Uh, but if we could be prepared for, well, uh, either the first or second meeting of January, like that, it kind of, uh, we can kind of visualize what happened this year and then see if that works and we can continue doing that um, in the future.
Great.
And I think it's sort of a work, a work in progress, how we, you know, figure out, you know, the best, the best way to, to deal with this. So I, I do have a question just before we leave this, as this project amendments may require uh, permit, um, amendment and approval by the original approving body, is that us? Are we the original approving body? Who, who are those guys?
So we have different levels of discretionary permits. We have the minor use permit, which goes to the zoning authority, zoning administrator. The majors come to the PC, sometimes the board is the one that does the approval. Uh, so it, it just means that it wouldn't be handled by a different approving body. The same one that saw the original permit would see modifications.
Okay.
And so that is something I think I had also asked for a definition for.
Yeah.
So, or I know I made a note on my paper here that that would be clearly defined so that.
Yeah, it's terminology that we use elsewhere in the code too.
Well.
Right, but.
Following English, if, 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 you know, you're stating that the original, the only other body that's listed in, listed in here is either planning commissioner or the, the CDD, so I think a definition is important.
Like you want us to add a definition in Article sixty-eight or you want this clarified to list it out? Because we could just say zoning administrator, or PC, or, or board supervisors.
Put in parentheses afterwards.
But that wouldn't actually convey the same meaning, because we, it's really important that the same approving body that saw the first one sees subsequent modifications. So I could, yeah, I'll, I'll wordsmith that.
Yeah, I think that that does need clarification or, or clarifying or.
So and to, uh, to, the reason for asking for definitions also is that because, as you were just saying, this is lingo that you use and that CDD uses, you know, and, and appears several times in information. But the average person and/or somebody from, you know, from other areas is not tuned into that lingo the same way that we're not, you know, we all can't speak computer technology speak, you know, and we, you know, there's just different languages here and so just.
Absolutely.
That the consumer, so to speak, understands.
I totally agree, yes, thank you, you made a, a good point because that's one thing that we wanted to fix or we plan to fix with Article seventy-three also is to, to make government regulation that people can understand.
Thanks.
So before we leave this, we're going to keep in the bold of uh, June one. Not change planning commission, but work on a process. And that you will, on the last sentence that's in bold, uh, reword that for greater clarity.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what I got too, yeah, thank you. And so I think we can just apply them to the rest of this table because it all still covers that uh, reviewing body, performance report and uh, uh, June first timeline. And that concludes the amendments to the ordinance, except I wanted to point out that um, county council did make some suggested edits, none of them are substantive. It changes like shall to hereby is, or, or hereby reads, or something like that, so. But the, so the uploaded version, when this goes to the board with your recommendations, um, will reflect county council's edits, but I, it was after the posting of this agenda, so.
I had, I had a question in this section before we leave this section. At the top of the next page where it says department staff will, will make every effort to calculate annual canopy. That, yeah, so what does that mean exactly? That seems like, so can it be done or can it not be done?
Yes, and I, I wanted to leave it more as though we'll make every effort because this year we noticed that the state changed the way they measured canopy. And so it ended up having some, some conflict between how we did it and how they did it. And it adds to the confusion of the actual cultivators uh, trying to, you know, serve two, two masters at one time that, that have two different things. So that's why we put in here that we will make the effort to, to measure as the same way as the state. Um, saying we'll make every effort, because if, sometimes we don't know the state changes until we're out there on, you know, doing our, our site visits. So just meaning that we will pivot as close, as closely as we can in real time to what the state does.
So can that statement reflect that, that it's in record, in, in accordance with um, state updates?
Do you not feel that that's covered in there?
I, yeah, I don't know, the way, the way it reads to me is just that, you know, if the staff has time, they're going to do it, you know. If the staff happens to miss it, they have an out, you know, that we made an effort. So I just, I just see it as.
You think it's too wishy-washy?
Yes.
Yeah, that is just like, you know, yeah, if we've got enough staff today, we're going to do it, you know, and if we don't have enough staff, you know, but what you're explaining to me is it's based on state, that you do in fact need to keep up to date with what the state is doing. And that's what's going to cause your fluctuation in, in your efforts.
All right, well then let's just take, make every effort out. Staff will calculate annual canopy area using the same method. Good?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I took the wishy-washy out.
Yes, yeah, and thank you for saying that, that I thought it was a little wishy-washy.
So before we leave this, I, uh, at the bottom of page five, um, the B, uh, the last part, it says, uh, the department on, will review inspection on annual basis or less frequently if approved by director. Is there a great theory for that? Who, who, I mean, I, I don't want to say who gets to decide, the director.
Yeah, that's no change, that, that, that has remained the same. The conversation at the task force level, which isn't in here, but will be part of Article seventy-three, was to, was like the, the maximum of time in between um, inspections, so. But that, I, I don't think that that was changed.
And should that say community development director, rather than just director?
Could you tell me where you're looking for?
Bottom of page five, it's uh.
There's one, two, three.
Of the.
Oh, 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 okay, I was looking on the wrong.
It's, it's, it's in the same uh.
Oh, yeah.
Area, okay.
If approved by the.
If.
Yeah, that's, that's already in the food right now.
If approved by the director, so, I mean, I mean, I know who the director is now, but I mean.
That leaves it wide open.
You, what does that mean? If, you know, it, it's um, seems to open into arbitrary.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Say what?
The zoning, the zoning ordinance has a definition section and in that section, there is a general terms part. Um, and uh, the basic things that pop up throughout the zoning ordinance are defined there, so. Use permit, department, board, commission and director amongst other words are defined there. And under that section, director means planning director.
Okay, I, I get the person, but I mean.
So planning director, not community development director?
Or, uh, the, yes, so planning, building and code enforcement are divisions of the same department. So yes, the planning director.
Okay, so that, that defines the director, but less frequently if approved, what is the criteria for approval of not being reviewed on an annual basis? Is.
That's out of our jurisdiction.
Oh, I, I know that, I, I understand that, but I mean, if, if, if somebody's reading that and go, oh. So how is that determined that there's, that some projects get an annual review and some projects get a buy?
I believe that goes off of like, um, their compliance over the years. If they seem like good actors from what I remember in the past, they might not get annual, they might get biannual or every two years or, or.
Yeah, they have to have five years of good standing, uh, and then make a request and so, and then I consider that request. So far, we're only now getting to the part where people are asking. Um, but we're not at the point where we've had anybody in five years of good standing yet because they were counting early activation, which I don't count, I count issuance of the, the major use permit.
So would it be better stated, less frequently if an application for, I don't know, for not being reviewed is, is approved by the director? It just seems like that there's, it sounds like there's no process, that, you know, okay, you know, you guys get it, you guys don't. How, how is that determined? And I, I think that, you know, the. And I, I think that, you know, the, the more, the clearer the determination factors are, the better it is for either the planning commission or the department, and certainly the, the applicant, to understand, okay, they're seeing me every year because I continue not to do something, or I'm such, I'm doing such a good job, I've earned a buy year, based on...
Yeah, I, I can understand that. But since that wasn't part of the list that went before the board of supervisors for amendment, it, I'll make note of that for Article 73, if that's okay. Because that's the next cannabis regulation ordinance that's coming to you next year.
Okay, so, sort of with that same sort of thought of, on, on page six, it says, again, review planning commission, crossed out by community development. I'd like to have that be consistent with what we just decided on the page before.
Uh-huh.
And then shall be deemed grounds for revocation. So I'm assuming that means the, the criteria for a, a good report card was not met, and so those, those would be the grounds for revocation.
I think, I think one of the issues is, is, as I was saying before, is that we're getting bits and pieces of it, so we're not looking at the entire context, and so that's where it's not connecting. But if we had the entire thing in front of us, the entire ordinance, I think it would, it would flow and we'd understand.
You mean the entire Article 27?
What's that? I don't know.
Yeah.
The place, the whole code. Yeah, okay.
Oh, well, this.
This, but is this the entire article?
The person isn't the entire ordinance.
No, that's the draft ordinance making the amendments that are in the staff report. Article 27 is, is the part of the zoning code where the cannabis regulations are currently housed.
Right.
It's 153 pages long.
Yeah.
Okay, one of the reasons I think this is a little confusing is because what I read in preparation for this meeting was the draft ordinance, and it is significantly different from the memorandum with attachment one. I'm not seeing a number of things that concerned me greatly when I was doing my reading, so I'm kind of wondering what happened in between.
Are you talking, when you say draft ordinance, are you talking about this?
I'm talking about what was posted on the agenda. This.
Let me look.
What I have is memorandum and board of supervisors, attachment one. I don't see a draft ordinance, except for what is online, and my, I had a lot of concerns about the draft ordinance that was online, mostly because it says that in, in several places, it eliminates sections, but it doesn't define what sections were, are, that are being eliminated, what they say.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So maybe I'm not understanding what's going on here, but...
One moment.
So to go back, I think...
For example, it says in the draft ordinance, section 27.139 of chapter 21 of Lake County Code shall be removed. How can I vote on something, to remove something, if I don't know what it is?
So that is on page four of your staff memo, I think, that's the one. And so this is within, what category are we talking about here?
No.
Oh, right. Did you say section 23.13 AU9, or was there a different one?
27.13 AU9, chapter 21.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good.
I'm not seeing...
Let me go. That's a fair, fair point, yeah, I'm sorry I didn't...
There are several of those.
Yeah.
At least three. As I was going through the document, I listed one, two, three...
Oh, yeah. I could, I can actually speak to that one.
Great.
Because, okay, so, as I mentioned before, when I made some, some grammar corrections, one of the things I noticed, as I was really like doing this deep dive, rolling around in, in the current Article 27, is I found some, some numbering errors, and removing nine is actually part of that, because that particular clause should not have been its own number. It should have been sub number four, which is what's covered in the staff report and in the ordinance, right above it. So then I had to remove number nine, because it would have been duplicate. Like, it, it was formatted wrong in the way the law is right now. So that was a correction on that one.
Okay, so that goes for section 27.13 AT6, and section 27.13 AU29, and...
Those are on renewals, I think. Yeah. Because we don't need anything in the ordinance to talk about renewals, if we're not doing renewals.
Okay, so there are three more things that are being removed, that I don't know what they are, and so I can't, I can't do that.
So it's hard to, yeah...
It's hard for, I'll speak for myself, it was hard for me after I read through all this, to really understand, first of all, the bits and pieces, and then I noticed on the, on the attachment, it looked like there were a couple of places where there was repetition, and a concern about, maybe there could be some summarization or put into, to one thing, and that was on the, this CCR 15003, mentioned a couple of times.
I purposely did not expand the details on that one, because it, I want it to be exactly what the state does require, so should the state make any changes, we would automatically have that change as well. And I did run those by the treasurer tax collector for his approval prior to posting the agenda.
But, see, that, we didn't know what that was. It just, it just looked, to me, I thought, oh...
So this here, this here goes, too, as far as on not having a review of cannabis projects and stuff, that we're not fully engaged. And so then, when you're trying to make this easy for us, Director Turner, by giving us a limited amount of information to review, which I applaud, but then by leaving out some of this stuff for those of us who are not fully, you know, or, or know the expanded, the bigger picture, that we're...
It just poses more questions.
We may be, yeah, so it's posing more questions, and we may be thinking too hard about it, so...
Right, that may be the...
It is, it is always very challenging when you guys can't just read my mind. Sorry.
So...
That's my bad. I left that detail out. I, it is in the applicant and property owner identification and background check, which I did mention, but didn't write in my staff report, that that purpose of that was to, and it's been done in other presentations, too, so that it was done for the purpose of supporting the treasurer tax collector in their efforts to assign responsibility and collect taxes. But you're right, yeah, sorry.
So one other thing on the, on the staff report, it looks like numerous times have been stated, the background checks. And so I wasn't clear whether those were things that were going to go in, or things that were going to go out, and, and...
In the staff report, the additions are in bold.
Right, but there are a couple of times, under different sections, that they talk about, they talk about having to, you know, have a review, a Department of Justice, or by the sheriff's department, a number of times. And so, can they not be, I mean, how many times are they going to be reviewed, or?
You are totally making the point for why we need an Article 73, because this ordinance is repetitive in different places. There were background checks listed, not just for cultivation, but then in a different section for like manufacturers, or, you know, it was listed multiple different times.
Well, yeah, you, you just, what'd you say? We're going to review everybody? Or, I mean, more, more...
We are adding...
More clearly, more clearly than that, but, to your point, yeah, repeat, 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 and I wasn't sure what sort of editing or suggestions we were supposed to do.
I have an edit to make.
We're focusing on the bold.
Item five. Well, scheduled deliveries and pickups are restricted as follows: colon, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So is that the only time deliveries can be made, or is it the opposite?
Wait, let me see, page five. Hold on.
Oh, it says item five, it's this...
Operating hours, item five.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just an editing issue. If, if we can move on or move back, I may have missed this because I was late, but I don't know if you're asking us for substantive editing or review, but today, earlier, it became clear, I think to all of us, that we need setbacks that are more than 100 or 200 feet. So in your section 27.13 AT1I of chapter 21, I would suggest that we add zeros to all of those, and instead have 100, instead of having 100 foot setbacks from property lines, we have 2,000, we have 1,000, and then setbacks from off-site residences, we have 2,000. My personal experience is, I had a, a grow that was 1,500 feet from my property line, and it was enclosed, and I got odors every morning at 8:00 when they opened the door. So, I mean, we can see that this is, this ordinance is really affecting the residents of Lake County, and if there's anything I can do to increase those setbacks, you know, we, we need to do this. We need to take this seriously.
Yes, and I would make that, I would second that, so that we look at increasing setbacks. I made the same notations here, that there is very little change here. So for, for an issue that has been an issue, that we hear all the time. So yes, I would like that recommendation to move forward to the board of supervisors.
So maybe perhaps back to Miley's question, and we should have asked this probably at the beginning, what is the scope of our, of our ability to affect what's in front of us, or to make changes or recommendations? And this, where does this, where's the next stop for this, until it gets to the board of supervisors, who I assume will, will they just approve this section that we got? Or are they including the entire thing, which we, are we going to then see that? I'm needing to understand where this is in the process, and, I mean, just on the, on the attachment, I went through, and I had, I have some questions. So I just didn't know, what are you asking us to do? And what can we do? Because we probably have a lot of ideas.
So, this is your opportunity to give recommendations to what was set before you. The recommendations could include, like Commissioner Field said, multiply those setbacks by 10 for every single one of them. But, and this is where we're gathering that information. Your input will be added to the staff report for the board, when the board has a notice public hearing for the same draft ordinance.
When, is there, are there other groups giving input? And what is the sort of time cadence that...
We're working on scheduling a meeting with the ag advisory board. I was hoping to have it before January, like mid-January, so I could take this to the board in mid-January, because that's when they requested it. But they did also request that the ag advisory board take a look at it, too.
So, shall we give you suggestions on, on this amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the whole point of bringing it to you today.
Okay, so I have one more.
And unlike the next item, you have a lot of wiggle room on this one.
Okay, I have one more suggestion.
Yeah.
Section 10, quote, "The board of supervisors independently finds and determines that this action is exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15061B3, in that it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question will have a significant impact on the environment. I would encourage the BOS not to include this. To me, it seems that SEQA should be upheld on every project."
SEQA is upheld on every project. It won't take away the requirement for every project to have its individual environmental analysis. This is a common sense exemption for this ordinance specifically, not for every project.
If I may, Mr. Chair. There is no action that your commission or the board can take that will invalidate state law. So any conflict between this rule and state law will be solved in favor of the state. So, so you can't waive SEQA here, so that is not a concern. When it comes to SEQA exemptions, there are certain things that county, not exemptions so much as, as ministerial projects, the county can decide what it defines as ministerial. So if that's something that, that you're concerned about and seeing in the language that's, that's permissible, your objection, if you have one, would be whether or not a particular thing does in fact fit the definition of ministerial.
So then what does it mean will have a significant impact on the, there's no possible significant impact on the environment? Who, how is that determined?
Where, where are you reading?
This is in the draft ordinance that was on the agenda.
Draft on page 11, under section 10.
Oh, so that's in relation to the ordinance itself. So in this case, in, SEQA applies to anything that's a project, and ordinances are no exception. They are in fact an action taken by the, by the agency, and so in this case, there is a SEQA analysis performed on the particular ordinance itself, and determining whether or not, if the board takes action, this particular action will have an impact on the environment. And in this case, it's a change of, of elements that are essentially within the ordinance that isn't adding a new ordinance, it's not, it's not creating, like, for example, if we were, if you were being asked to, to advise the board on whether or not to increase housing in a particular location through the ordinance, that might have an impact, because you go from an ordinance that allows only farming, for example, into an ordinance that would, that would zone it for, for multi-use housing. That might have an impact at some point down the line, and that would be analyzed. In this case, what, what staff is recommending is that the board find that this, that the, the changes in this ordinance are not going to have an impact on the environment.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I would just like to opine that Lake County has limited environmental treasures. They're very valuable, and we need to respect them, and the more SEQA reviewed, the more diligent the review, the better. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, this will not have an impact on any projects proposed under the ordinance itself. So, yeah, yeah, so this would just be for the changes proposed in this ordinance.
I understand that now, thank you.
I have a question on, it's page nine, it was part of, just above seven, so it must have been part of six. The last sentence, and we were just talking about this in our last, in our last review of project about anchor points, it said greenhouse construction shall utilize anchor point foundation when feasible. Concrete slab foundations are discouraged. We either say they need to be anchor points, and when feasible, determined by whom?
This was, this resulted from a discussion at the board level, because they thought of numerous instances where anchor points may not actually be feasible, and so that's, they actually requested that wording.
Well, if they're not feasible, then perhaps the project shouldn't go forward. I mean, they were put in their, that whole...
To protect farm...
That whole, yeah, that whole thing of, we certainly had a conversation up here about anchor points and, and versus, you know, planting a greenhouse on a slab, and so this almost, to me, it says, I say it's not feasible for my project, so I'm, I'm laying a, a concrete slab. So I, it just kind of gives...
I would agree. It's too wishy-washy, it doesn't protect farmland, and that's one of the purposes for, for inserting that, or going with the anchor point foundation versus a concrete slab. So actually, it's not discouraged, it concrete, well, yeah, strongly. Concrete slabs should strongly be discouraged.
Should not be allowed, either...
Yeah, exactly.
Not be allowed. And we just had a definition of what anchor points are, which, that helped to understand the definition.
And so that, yeah, and so, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm buttoning in here, but yes, I have questions about that, too. And, and then with the build, with the building, our, our staff member in charge of the building department, you know, is there any reason why anchor point foundations wouldn't be feasible?
I can speak to that. Yes, there is. It would be based on the engineering standpoint and the soil stabilities in which the structure was proposed to be erected.
Right. But, but back to the...
Then it should not be allowed.
Yeah, back to the... But back to, yeah, back to the point that the reason that this was put in there was to be protective of the ground, you know? And if it's, well, you know, it could be, it could not be feasible, not feasible, it seems like then the project should not go forward. It's not the right location for that particular project if anchor point foundations cannot be used.
To me, that's, yeah, to me, that's one of the things, as far as if we are working towards streamlining, this doesn't streamline it. This opens up the vagueness of, because then we have various different arguments coming before us of why it's not feasible, why they want to do something other than put in anchor point foundation. I agree with my fellow commissioner here that if it's not feasible, then it is the wrong location.
I think that a lot of the language in this is vague. And what I'm hearing is that, I mean, this is supposed to be an ordinance. It's supposed to define the law. So that's what it should do. And if it's left up to the decision of staff or somebody other than a judicial body, then it's vague, and it doesn't hold water. So I think that we need to be, generally in this document, we need to be more concrete. Either, you know, it needs to have XYZ, or you have to apply for variance to this law. To me, it's just, this isn't a legal document. It's just too vague to be that.
If there is commission consensus, I will make note of a recommendation that anchor points, you all want anchor points to be required. With no exceptions.
I think there's an issue with that, because if you happen to, you know, be in a very rocky area, and that's not possible, which is hardly the case, because most people that plan want to find a flat spot, usually an area that's already been farmed in the past. That's what that, the anchor point foundation, when feasible, is, most of the time, it will be feasible. Concrete slabs would be more for permanent structures. And I think that's why it's discouraged unless if you're building, you know, a greenhouse, that's kind of, is that the correct term, greenhouse? Instead of a hoop house. So I think hoop houses would hardly ever require a concrete slab, because they have to be removed, and that area must be kept. You know, that's the reason why we put that in there, to protect the prime farmland or the agricultural soils where these projects are sitting. So discouraging the anchor points would be like, okay, then I can't do anchor points, then I'll do a slab. And I think that's where it becomes problematic, that most of the time, and in terms of finances, too, concrete is more expensive. So most people would turn away from doing concrete slabs. But in the case, which we haven't seen, I think, so far, most people wouldn't do a concrete slab under a hoop house or greenhouse.
But we're talking about in the farmland protection zone. We're talking about in a specific area that's been identified as prime or as farmland to be protected. So we don't want to do concrete slabs there.
Of course, this is also only limited to the greenhouses. Any other ag accessory structure can have a foundation.
Yeah, if you wanted to have a permanent, you know, barn.
This is specific only to those structures, for cannabis only.
In farmland protection zones.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a very, it doesn't affect a lot. But if there is consensus, which I think there might be, I couldn't quite tell from Miley's comment, then we'll note the recommendation that you want them required in all cases.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the FPA zone.
Yeah.
Next.
So are you, in your hopes and dreams, that we complete this today?
Yes, that is my very biggest hope and dream, because we don't have another meeting this month, and I am taking this to the board in January. Otherwise, they might call me in for closed session and show me the door. So yeah, if you could do it today, that'd be awesome.
Is the board's review in January, is that going to be the final final?
It will be a notice public hearing with an expectation of, yes, it would result in a first reading. The board, they would like to be done talking about cannabis for now. So I think that they'll be motivated if they can. If they have a level of comfort, they will hold a public hearing and either make amendments or adopt it, or, you know, do the first reading at that time.
The first reading, then there will be one more public input before final approval, is that correct?
Yes, then it goes for a second reading.
Second reading. And between first and second, you hope to meet with the ag advisory committee? Because you said, when do you have?
I really wanted to meet with, I'd like to meet with them before the first meeting. But I haven't run it past the board, because we have that date already set, that the board knows it's coming. And so I haven't asked them if it's okay if we do it later.
When is that date, please?
11th, I think, of January.
January 11th, I see, okay, thank you.
I would think that it would be more important to go in front of the ag advisory committee than us.
Well, I don't know.
Well, you are the ones that are given the authority to make land use recommendations to the board. So I think it's important to go before both of you.
I highly encourage you to schedule an ag advisory meeting to cover this.
Catherine has sent out a doodle poll, and she's working on getting one scheduled. But she may not be able to do it until after.
Can I move on with some comments? Can I move on with some comments about this? So I would agree in the first, and going through the first section, as far as that we need to increase setbacks. And then I had a question on the next section, section two, full-time employees. First off, I just want to ask the question, as far as with, I just don't understand, well, the definition for full-time employees, because, you know, I know in the business world, we can call employees a number of different things. And so what, you know, a full-time employee, is that a 40-hour a week? Is it 60-hour a week? And does that mean if it's 40-hour a week, if it's a 39-hour-a-week person, it's a part-time? And so there's not much difference there between who gets background checks and who doesn't? Just trying to understand that section there a little bit.
Sure, yeah, the, go ahead. My turn, do you want, I'm sorry, I thought I was interrupting you.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay, so that came through discussion with the task force, recognizing that similar to conventional ag, a lot of the employees that come out for like harvest or processing or things like that are subcontractors, not technically their employees. And so through that, through those conversations, they settled on, you know, we can understand how, if it was a, like what you said in your email, a permanent employee or a full-time employee, that makes good sense. And so that was their recommendation, which did come before this planning commission and the board already also.
So there's an incentive to hire subcontractors, because their employees don't have to go through background checks? Am I understanding that right?
No, there is an actuality of they do hire subcontractors, because that's easier to get done. It's just like, you know, they're already set up, because they do.
I guess what I'm asking is.
For all other types of ag, too.
How do you define employees? Because what I'm hearing is that if you're using a subcontractor, that person doing the work is not an employee.
Correct, they're not.
So they're exempt from the background checks?
Correct.
So we may want to change that language.
Commissioners, can I provide additional insight?
Yes.
In syncing with the state regulations, the community development department recognizes that employees of a farm would need to have a background check, a LIVSCAN background check. We do also understand that a farm labor contractor who holds the contract must have a LIVSCAN background check. But those who are contracted underneath the farm labor contractor would not. The reason why is because these workers are subject to change on a regular basis and go to different sites. With that, I did connect with some of my colleagues with different county departments in aligning with the state. There are two separate state agencies that are specific to employees. One is the Department of Pesticide Regulation, and this requires training records of current and past employees with record retention of two years. The purpose of this is if there's any pesticide accidents that occur, then they can figure out who has been exposed. So there is a two-year retention period for all of those records. Additionally, the Department of Industrial Relations does want to know the rate of pay and the frequency of pay and whether there's workers' compensation insurance. So in aligning with the state, we would still require those LIVSCAN background checks for those that are permanently employed by the farm and not necessarily under the farm labor contractor as subcontractors. But again, the farm labor contract holder would need to have that LIVSCAN background check as well.
That's assuming you use a farm labor contractor. If you don't, to Miley's point, then they don't have to have a background check.
I'd like to bring up an issue that's related to this. What I've seen in the field is that a lot of cannabis project people use cash, because cannabis production is not federally legal. A lot of the federal laws are kind of bypassed. I'm not quite sure what the terminology should be here. But I became aware of it, because a local bank employee mentioned to me that they cannot accept large amounts of cash, because they're federally insured. And it's a very difficult situation. I'm not a banker, I'm not familiar with the industry. But I think we all need to kind of keep in mind and be aware that there are people walking around with a lot of cash right now. And I think that I'd like to hear law enforcement input on this as well as input from the banking industry. So that would, I don't know how to say that as a recommendation, but I'm very, very concerned as a citizen of Lake County to kind of third-hand observe what's going on in the community this way.
So talking about employees on page three of the staff report, about midway down where it says E, "Due to the nature of agricultural work, a full-time employee may be permitted to work temporarily upon submitting electronic fingerprints." So if you're not, it's to my question earlier, if you're not connected with, you know, a labor contractor, and you just, I walk in, because I think, you know, I need work, and there's some work there. How does any of this apply to me? Not full-time, part-time, but having any sort of background check or anything? Does that then not apply, or is that not applicable? Or how's that work?
This is part of the current code. This is the way the code is. The only change would be changing it to full-time employee.
Right, but it just, you know, when we're talking about checking backgrounds or not checking backgrounds, or being part of the agricultural, an agricultural contractor, it's just like it's already been stated, it can be kind of confusing.
So, yeah, it says.
And to Miley's point before, whatever, again, as I had mentioned, you know, is it 40 hours? Is it 39? So that if I walk in the door or whatever, and I say, I don't want to get fingerprinted and stuff, so I'm only going to work 39 hours. And my employer says, great, I'll hire you for 39 hours. So you're not considered full-time. That's.
And then you switch IDs.
Is there a recommendation from the planning commission on what you want to see there instead?
I don't really have a recommendation at this point, as I was in this area. I guess the recommendation is, is that we're a little bit concerned? Or I'm personally a little bit concerned with this section in throwing in full-time, and, you know, and what does that mean? Or how do we monitor that? You know, is there any value, you know, given there's a slip and slide there? You know, in reality, just in the, and I'll just use this, you know, as an example, as far as in the farming community, and we had the law passed that we have to pay overtime, you know, to, you know, to employees working, we have to cut their day. Anyway, we have to pay an extreme amount of money in overtime and sick pay and et cetera, et cetera. And so then farmers, basically, because they couldn't, because that exasperated the economics of farming. So then they just cut back, and, okay, so there's no more overtime work, period. So we make adjustments according, you know, to the laws that are thrown at us and the regulations. You know, as a general in society, we make adjustments to accommodate. It's like, okay, they say I can't do that, so I'll do this. That's the way, if I can use the term, I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to say anybody's skirting the law. But, you know, in essence, that is a reality of what happens. And so how does this ordinance? And yeah, I need some help, and that's where the background, that's why I was asking you, as far as, you know, about the background of this piece of the ordinance, which I don't have a full grasp on, so I don't have a recommendation. But I do want to express a concern.
I would recommend that we do not add full-time, and that we use just the word employee.
So the change here that's implied is that it wouldn't, it would not apply to every single employee. It would be limited to full-time. So if I understand correctly, the commission, is the commission saying, is there consensus to say that you disagree with that change?
Yes, I think every employee, no matter how many hours he or she works, should have a background check.
I'm looking to see if there's consensus.
Yeah, and this is because we're also, we're kind of working and dealing with a crop that, you know, while we, as it was mentioned before, that in 2019, the board of supervisors, we've termed it as agriculture, but unfortunately, it's also still classified as a drug. And that's why we have to have security, and we have to have lights, and we have to have solid fences, and we have to have background checks. So, and so there is, it's kind of a balancing act.
So that's two.
Does that point, is that consistent with state law?
No, state law does not require employee background check.
Yeah, because if it's not consistent, then I would disagree with making any changes to.
Yeah, the background checks for employees is specific to Lake County.
Yeah, because I know that.
State law, for your license, licensed owners, I think they need the background checks, but not the employees.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I think we should proceed as the recommendations are from staff. I wouldn't want to change something that's not going to be consistent. I know that we can add more rules as a county, but I think that would discourage a lot of people that are going to be working in these facilities. And I don't think that's fair to the applicants that are running these projects, or to the people that are going to be employed.
And so can you explain, Director Turner, why Lake County inserted background checks for employees? What is the reason? What's the history behind that?
The original cannabis ordinance came from a position of taking an illegal industry into a legal structure. So I think a lot of the baggage, the damage that had been incurred due to the illegal industry carried over into our first attempt at regulations.
Thank you.
So where do we land here?
From what I gather, I will just make note that this was not a recommendation, a unanimous recommendation.
But three, three.
Yep, not unanimous. But there is, three does establish consensus.
In the interests of safety and public welfare.
All right, next.
I have a question on, it's page eight, it's the opt-out. The last sentence, "Opt-out request shall not be approved for consecutive years." And the next sentence says, "Two consecutive years of non-cultivation will result in the expiration of the use permit."
Yes, that was to further clarify why they would not be granted for consecutive years. My all-use permits, or most use permits expire naturally if they are not used for two years.
But you can only get a permit for one year to non?
Right, you can get an opt-out, just not for consecutive years. Like, you could get an opt-out on year one, but not year two, but then yes, on year three.
Okay, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but it says you can only get one year, but if you do it two years in a row, your permit will expire. How can you do? How can you do it-
It goes one year at a time, not for more than one year consecutively.
Okay, maybe, maybe it's just me. Seems a little contradictory, but okay.
I will do some wordsmithing on that one too, because if it's going to confuse somebody here, it's going to confuse somebody in the public too. So I'll note that.
Maybe ask somebody else to read it. Maybe it's just me.
Okay.
I'm still trying to find the page because-
So before, before we leave that section though, because this is on, this is on section four, is that correct? Is that where we were at? Section four, where a permitee can, can on an annual basis ask for a reduction in canopy or a change in the canopy and also, and/or could ask for an opt-out. But so what is the process here? Because it says in writing, but in today's world, in writing could be via text, could be via email, that's all writing. So, so I want some clarification there and wondering whether postmarked by June 1 should be inserted or something like that, which indicates mail and, and gives also some verification rather than creating a situation where one could argue, but I sent it, didn't you receive it? What do you mean you didn't receive it? So, and-
We also accept it via email.
What's that?
We also would take it via email.
Okay, so that just opens up-
We could say, received no later than.
Is, is there a form or, or any application for, for, for that? Or is it just, just one sentence? I would like to blah, blah, blah.
Okay, Mary's going to talk to us.
Okay.
So every year, let me see, this year, we sent out notification on April 1st to all permit holders. The notification included the compliance monitoring requirements. There are three components within that. There is the performance report due by June 1st, scheduling the site visit and then paying the fees. Within that communication that's sent electronically and to the USPS mailing address that we have on file, we also include an opt-out or request to reduce form, and that is submitted back to the department by June 1st.
Okay, so there is a form.
There is a form, yes, and all of this information is compiled. It is confidential on who's opting out because it's proprietary information, but I keep track of all of these requests that come into the department. And once June 1st hits, I have a collection of data that's submitted to the treasurer tax collector, and with that, I also compile all of the processed requests and send them over to the treasurer tax collector.
So back, just, go ahead, go ahead, Monica.
I appreciate knowing that there's a form because that's what I was envisioning or whatever, you'd get handwritten notes from people I want to-
In the past, we have received those. I'm going into my, this upcoming season will be my sixth annual inspection year, and with that, I have received it over the phone. I said, no, we can't receive it that way. It does need to be in writing. So we have received these via email, but since then, we do have a standardized form and that is sent to all permittees, so everyone has fair access to it. Additionally, we have stacks of them in the department prior to the beginning of the season, so anybody can come and get one or just request that one be emailed or sent in the mail.
Okay, so, and then my, my final question on that is, how is that funded? Is there a fee associated with all this time and energy that goes, goes into these?
There is no additional fee, however, there is a set fee for compliance monitoring that's set by the board that's subject to change with our master fee schedule. With all of the work that the compliance monitoring requirement does take, it is something to consider if we do want to add a fee or capture a process, a potential amount of funds for someone who is going to opt-out if there be a baseline, but that is something for the board to consider as well.
So, but I would assume that as you're tallying, as CDD is tallying, how much time and energy you're putting into this, especially as this appears in, in a new ordinance, an update, that you will keep track of that and ask the board, I guess, for additional, an increase in that to cover the cost for, if this happens on a regular annual basis.
I would defer to Director Turner for that.
Yes.
See, before you go on, I would just, for clarification, in this ordinance, you need, rather than just say in writing, you might clarify, in writing per the, you know, department's form or format, because I think that when we're talking about being as specific as possible, back to Monica's comment, I dropped a note off at the desk. It was in writing, because you do a, a good process. You have a process, and to say in writing, I don't think certainly reflects the, the quality of the process that you put out there that people have to respond to in order to, to have this change. So I think in writing needs to be, or, or per the approved form or, or something, because you've got a process. This appears like it's sort of, you know-
A post-it.
Yeah, a post-it note, yeah. Didn't you see my post-it note? Yeah, so I would, I would clarify that because you're doing it, goodness sakes.
Yes.
Okay, if we're still on section six, I'm not sure we are. My pages aren't numbered, so at the end of section six, there's some discussion about farmland protection zones and whether cannabis cultivation has to be indoors or not. That's great. I'd like to add, I'd like to see added, not necessarily by me, but maybe by the ag advisory committee, some kind of distance setback or something, because I'm aware that the terpenes and the cannabis can affect wine grapes. I, I think that can't be ignored. I think that we're heading for trouble if we have vineyards right next to outdoor cannabis. So I just want to call attention to that, and I would hope that that would be brought up before the ag advisory committee, that issue, and maybe some language added regarding that.
The board has indicated a lack of support on any other changes for farmland protection zone.
Okay, and I'm going to throw in a comment because I do every time for FPZ, so I do think, I don't think that that door should be slammed shut. I think that there should be discussion, as we saw the map earlier for FPZ. It is in primary, it is in a certain area of the county and excludes a large number of other locations. And I, from being from District 1, if you notice, there was no, there's no FPZ, there's no farmland protection at all in the District 1 area. And, and that, I believe, is a, and this could be my opinion only, but I believe that's a direct reflection on the supervisor that was in, in the chair at the time FPZ was approved. So, and that was based on, on that situation at that time, and I think much has changed as this agricultural crop has evolved. And again, I just, I'll put in the word that I don't think that that door should be slammed shut. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. As, as we're looking at all the components of this, all the components should be looked at hopefully with equal enthusiasm. I have a question on, on seven, where it says, this section shall include a map of any spring. What kind of map is that? Is it my map that I draw?
Site plan. It would, it would follow the site plan requirements, which we do require them done by a licensed professional.
Okay, it didn't say that in here, so-
It says it elsewhere in that same section, yeah.
In, in seven?
It requires, no, in our code, it does require site plans be done by licensed professionals, and I didn't want to get repetitive by putting it in every single place where, because this is within the section that talks about the site plans.
Yeah, perhaps a way to let the reader know that there's sort of more information behind that, you know, it could be asterisk and then you have that, you know, at the end of the book where you have everything delineated out, what all those things mean? Excuse me.
My understanding is this is just excerpts that need editing.
I can, I have the 27 pulled up where it mentions that. It's on page 27-1, 28. This is of Article 27, which I realize you don't have printed out in front of you.
Oh, okay.
But it says, site plan, a site plan is a graphic representation of the project consisting of maps, site plans, or drawings prepared by a design professional consistent with the requirements of Article 55.5, which has a whole list of what's required for any site plan. And then subsection I underneath that is this section. This section shall include a map of any spring, top, bank, yada, yada, yada.
Okay, thank you. And that's sort of part of the, you know, seeing only a little teeny piece. See, that, that answers that whole question. Thank you.
And that's page 81, I believe, of Article 27.
PDF page 83.
My final comment on this, and I know we still need to open up public comment on this topic as well, but my final comment is, is just, which I, I think, I think you've done, or at least to the best of our ability here, is really making sure that, that the information that we're gathering from permittees is available and is accurate, which as we're talking about, they are, is indicated the property owners and in accordance with the state, so that our, the tax collector here in Lake County and his department doesn't have to scurry about all over the place trying to figure out who is responsible for paying, paying the tax, paying the fees, because I did in the past or whatever, maybe somebody else has seen that too, but I did see a couple of presentations by, by our tax collector, you know, where he showed a chart, you know, that was quite a puzzle. So I hope that we are in fact working towards streamlining that, so the contact information is there for CDD as well as for our property tax collector.
Thank you, yes, and I did make sure that he reviewed this draft ordinance before it came to you. We would, we wanted to make sure that we got that locked in.
Thank you.
I have no further comments.
We do need to open up public comment.
All right, we'll open up public comment for this item. If you wish to speak, please come up to the podium, state your first and last name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Tom Lasik. First, I want to thank the CDD and for the hard work they've done on this, and I hope Director Turner feels better in the future. We do miss her here in chambers. I just had a couple of things, and this is from a sort of a real-world perspective, so you understand where I'm coming from. So the first one I want to talk about is the opt-outs. So just to put it in context, there is a grow that's adjacent to me that's directly north of me, and they got their permit in November of 2023, I believe. It's been over two years. And they didn't grow last year and they didn't grow this year. And I had inquired on this, and I believe it was Michelle, but it could have been another planner, and I said, you know, it's been two years since they've been approved and they haven't grown anything. And I was told, well, as long as they pay for the opt-out or they pay the fee, then the permit keeps going. So I, I would like, after my questions, if that could be clarified, if this changes that, that your permit isn't revoked if you haven't grown, as long as you pay the opt-out fee, because I, I don't think, I think that defeats the purpose. And then related to that is we're talking about, if you're so many years in good standing, but, you know, every other year is an opt-out year, are you, does that reset the clock or does the opt-out year count as the total number of years of good standing? Because if you haven't done anything, then it, it seems to be a little bit confusing on that. The other one is on the annual report. I commend the, the planning commission for taking that really seriously. And again, speaking from, you know, real-world context, one of the largest complaints is, is that there are conditions of use or there are things that the, the applicant says are going to do, and then they don't do them. Okay? And then, and that's a big complaint, is that, you know, we, this was approved under these conditions, and it turns out they're using way more water than they thought, or they're, they never did, you know, fix the road, or they never did expand the gate, or they never did A, B, C, D, and E. And I think it would be important for, as part of that review, and I understand confidentiality, I understand the, you know, the volume of things that are coming in, but I think it would be important for the planning commission to know, how did that turn out? Were those conditions of use being followed? Because that is one of the biggest complaints. They're supposed to turn in annual reports, and a lot of them don't until there's a PRA request saying, I'd like to see the annual report for project ABC, and then all of a sudden, the annual report comes in, you know, because nobody bothered to check. Those kind of blocking and tackling, that's where governance comes in, and that's why it's so important. And then, and just finally to close on the setbacks, we had a really great graph in the last meeting, you saw how excited I got about that. The setbacks that were proposed by CDD weren't based on that math or any math, it was just sort of a suggestion. And I think we now have an opportunity, that graph's not perfect, there, we still don't know what that tolerable threshold is, but a, a site that is a quarter acre, which is a minor use, and a site that's an acre that's four times bigger, you just have the same level of tolerance, you have to move the acre back at least twice as far. It's a, it's a doubling issue, it's, it's basic math formula, but as you, I do applaud the recommendation. You guys, the last time this came before you, you said 1,000 feet, and it came back to you as 200. The board has asked for some scaling, and I think the scaling should be based on acreage and not tier. And there's simple math that, you know, seventh-grade math that covers that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Mitzel. So the opt-out, one year of opt-out seems a little extreme when people are, it's taking four years to get the permit, right? Like the last guy, that was, he applied in 2021, it's the end of 2025. You have, because you have to get a grading, a separate grading permit, you have to get all these other things once your project's approved. So one year to not operate is not enough time for, especially for a larger project. So that just seems crazy to me. And then on top of it, if you got your permit today, you applied for a state license, right now it takes 12 to 13 months. So like you can't even abide by one year from the date of approval. So there has to be at least something in there that shows that if you're putting, if there's significant advance on towards the permit, like a building permit, you open a building permit, it's good for so long. If you show the, the building department that you're making progress, they keep your building permit open, even though it has an expiration date. So it makes no sense to me to just put a one-year hard opt-out limit, because it, it just doesn't work, especially with a larger project, especially when your conditions of approval, I had a project in Middletown, the conditions of approval, there's like 100 conditions of approval that we had to meet after the approval date. So how can you possibly put in 3,000-foot of water line that you need a grading permit for? I worked with her to get the grading permit, it, it literally took me nine months to get the grading permit approved. And that, you can't do anything until you did that. So there has to be a caveat in there that if you're working towards your permit, that when, that one year doesn't, just you lose your whole permit after one year. That's crazy, people have like millions of dollars invested in some of these larger projects to say, you don't even get the second year of opt-out. Like maybe that would be reasonable to say, if you can't opt-out more than twice in the beginning of the permit at least, like maybe once you're act, once you're operating and they don't want you opting out three years in a row, but from the date of approval, you have to give them two years to get the project going. It's just crazy. I represent the project behind him that he was talking about, it's been two years, and there's been a change of ownership, there's grading permits, we've put, I applied for state license last year in October, I still don't have it. We've met every guide, every one of their timelines, we've turned in everything they want, it's been sitting in final approval for three months at the state level. So we're trying to get it done, but to do everything they want, one year doesn't, it doesn't work. It takes five years-
And that is our time, if you would like to wrap up.
We have 10 months to get all the actual work done, so. We have ten months to get all the actual work done, so it just doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Chair Travis, could I ask a question?
Yes.
We did, we did think about that, Mike makes a good point. And so that's why we put in wording that said upon issuance of the state cultivation license, because we figured maybe that would be when actual operation would be launched. So if, if Mike could just answer whether or not that makes a difference, that, that was our attempt to actually.
I didn't seem clear to me that that's what it was. It looks like if you opt-out once, you could never opt-out that second time in a row, and I didn't read it like that, maybe that's what you meant.
If you get your state, do you usually get your state license a few years before you start growing?
No, you can't. You can't get a state license until you have local approval. So part of the state license is they reach out to Mary and ask her, do they have a use permit? Before you can even apply for a state license, we have to be approved by you, and then they call, they reach out to Mary, and she tells them, yes, they have a state license, then you can start the process. Which at one point, it only took six months, but right now, the state has nobody working there. There's nobody working in the cannabis department, so you're looking at thirteen months, once you've applied. Like a real life scenario, it's been thirteen, fourteen months that I have an application pending for the project north of him.
And then, so, so the way that this code is set up then, this amendment, would mean that you don't even have to opt-out until you have your license?
I mean, as of now, we've been opting out. I, I don't know if it changes that, but like the last two years on that project, we've opted out, that's what the county has like explained to us to do, like, okay, you're working, file the opt-out, everything's fine. Now they're changing it to say one year, when it's thirteen months, just to get the license. So like, literally every project that you approve going forward is going to fail at that.
And is there a fee for you to opt-out?
Yeah, yeah. Not that we've had to pay, no. I recommended that to Mary, actually, is like, maybe that is the answer, is some type of a fee to opt-out. But at the same time, it's like, so say you have a project, it's been a year and a half, and we say, okay, we're willing to pay, we want to do a reduced canopy, but you can't do that without a license. Right? So like, you can't even do, you still have to have the state license for the reduced canopy. So like, we'll, we'll do five thousand feet and pay the tax on that, but then that's not legal either. So it's like, you're just really putting us in a corner to where we have, it's literally, there's no time to do it.
But like Director Turner is saying, though, that if the timeline starts when you have your state license.
That just doesn't cover you guys either, let's think about that. So if we got approved, we never applied for a state license, then it goes forever?
No, I think, I think what we're looking at also are the two different purposes of an opt-out. One, it's, it's, we're looking at it right now from a land use point of view, in, in terms that usually use permits expire, but what I'm not thinking about is also then the implications for tax payments, which is the purpose for the opt-out notification. So he makes a good point.
It's more of a build-out than it is an opt-out. Like maybe there should be another form that you can file that you're building out, that like.
Right, that you're not operational yet.
Yeah, it's similar to a building permit. That would be able to be extended, you come in, just like the building department has discretion, you say, look, I poured my foundation, I have all this work done, I need an extension, and as it's written in all of the other parts of the code, it would just be, Maria has the ability to say, they've, they're working towards their permit, and we shouldn't just take it before they're able to get it. Because like I said, if you have a grading permit involved in your permit, what's the time on a grading permit? It's months, there's a whole nother SEQA involved. You have to go through SEQA again, once you're approved, to get a grading permit. That's three months by itself. So it's like, it just makes no sense to put a one-year opt-out on a new project especially, and then after you do all that, you're still waiting thirteen months for a state license. So I would just like to see a build-out portion of the beginning of the project, and then I get not wanting them to opt-out four years in a row after they're operating, and some language that says you have to at least make progress, similar to a building permit, is what I would like to see.
Thank you, and my apologies to Chair for hijacking your public.
No, I think it's, it was a good question, I think we all needed clarification in that, and I think other applicants would have, they would appreciate that as well, that feedback.
And I also would like to thank Mike Mitchell for, for being here, because I know you've been here for a long time today. So, but you supplied a lot of good information. So, so anyway, thank you for taking the time to remain here and endure this with us. So, and then from what you said also is, is, I guess we also perhaps maybe need to look at as a separate issue, is how can we improve that timeline on grading, on obtaining grading permits, not only for cannabis, but for any project?
Should the commission like to add that to an agenda sometime? We can talk about it then, but I don't want to get us too far off from this.
Put it on our list. And it, it really, it is disconcerting that when folks are trying to do things right and are on our right about following things, if the, if the bureaucracy just, just hangs them up, yeah, that's.
duly noted, and I am totally not pointing out right now that we are still only on item two of four items, we've been in session for six and a half hours.
Thank you.
I'm not going to say that.
We're still on public comment.
Right, and are we on overtime yet?
All right, we do have our next speaker, please state your first and last name, we have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Margot Cambara. Before we move away on these opt-outs, Tom Lasik and I are neighbors to the project to the north of us, and we want to say that what the applicant has provided sounds very reasonable, what his recommendations are. But to continue, I have about four points I want to share with you, if you don't mind. First is, the Board of Supervisors depends on the Planning Commission for its recommendations on land use matters. And thank you for making the observation that the door should not be closed on FPZ, Farm Line Protection Zone. There are some topics that are so important for the community to, to flesh out, and especially since we're in the general plan update period, we need to be, we need to have clarity on what growth is going to look like for this county. And cannabis, if it's going to be part of our economy, part of our ag landscape, we, we need to take a look at that and determine what are the parameters. Secondly, you touched on safety and background checks, and I had the joy of attending almost every cannabis ordinance task force meeting, and at one of them, at least one of them, I think at two, law enforcement attended, law enforcement's recommendation was, no, background checks should apply to everybody on the project site for safety reasons. So thank you for keeping community safety in mind. It's truly, truly appreciated. And another point is setbacks. Thank you, thank you, thank you for keeping in mind that there is no real solution to odor mitigation for outdoor grows. And it is distance, it's a poor, it's a poor management device, but that's, that's what we have. And going to, and keeping that in mind will help, it's not a perfect solution. So thank you, Commissioners, for your attention to this important topic, and thank you for weighing in and wading in this thorny thicket of issues.
Thank you for your comment.
Good afternoon, Patrick Sullivan, I'm the County Treasurer Tax Collector. I just want to take the opportunity to thank community development staff for working with our office on cannabis taxation matters, and kind of ensuring that our voice was heard in this. We did have a lot of requests in areas where we thought there could be changes made that could really help us in our enforcement efforts, and those were incorporated into this. So I just wanted to note that a lot of those changes, the more, the more information about applicants, some of those other clarifications, that really will help us in our efforts. So I appreciate your commission's consideration of those. And I was just going to note on the opt-out process, yeah, I think as Director Turner noted, there are two things going on, there's the land use, and then there's also the tax program. So we do encourage people to file the opt-out each year, because taxation, one day of activity where a flat rate does incur that tax consequence. So if someone's not going to cultivate for their sake, for the purposes of the tax, it is best to file that opt-out, because we have had people where they lose their license in the middle of their cultivation operation, but they had already begun operations. So at that point, they are being taxed, even though that state license may have dropped, or they were suspended, or some other action was taken. So I just wanted to highlight that, that we do always encourage people to do the opt-out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Bill Wilson, I would like to comment on from June, Lake County Planning Commission review summaries. One of the things that it was discussed was to seek additional options to mitigate odors and impacts on residents and neighbors. The commission and multiple residents urge stronger setbacks and more robust monitoring. I think that's important. I think some of the specific recommendations, like mandatory installations of greenhouses is already in there. Systems should be appropriate for the facility's size and not exceed any kind of a minimum, a maximum. Like in San Luis Obispo, they have to require for an abatement plan, they have to have a California licensed professional engineer that looks at the facility and says, okay, this is so many cubic feet, these filters are good for so many cubic feet, yea or nay on the say. Lake County doesn't do that. If we have a professional person have to draw maps for waterways, why wouldn't we have a professional person to certify greenhouses as far as the filtration systems are concerned? The, you know, and my experience is that the initial study plans, property management plans, need only be written in a vague, nonspecific method. All the applicant has to say is, we have filtration. Nobody's checking to see if the filtration matches the building size. I've been asking that question several times, and I've even been told by one person that they can't tell me how many filters are in there. Evidently that's proprietary, I'm not sure what that is, but the, again, the county ordinances, the study plans, property managed plans, all state that commercial cannabis cultivation exclusion zones, the odors would be mitigated to less than significant levels, and that's not happening, is my opinion. We don't have somebody certified, I mean, we have, to be an ag inspector, you have to have a college degree in biology, something to be a building inspector, you have to have state licenses, and you have to have two years in operation, but to be a cannabis inspector, all you have to have is certification on how to write ordinances. We need more professional help in saying, like mitigation, in outdoor mitigation, you know, they talk about vegetation screening. You know, they don't, vegetation screening, if you have trees that grow three foot, you have to be twenty foot, does that mean the poor cannabis guy can't plant for ten years until the trees grow? But no, they plant, and they say we have vegetation screening, greenhouses are evidently twenty feet above.
You'd like to close up your comments?
Pardon me, that's it?
That's your three minutes, but you can close your comments if you'd like.
My three minutes are up?
Yes, but you can, you can wrap up and do a conclusion if you'd like.
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any hands in the Zoom room for this item? Okay.
First one is iPhone fourteen.
All right, we'll take the first person on Zoom, it looks like the name is iPhone fourteen, please state your first and last name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Pardon me, that's it?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sorry, I didn't, that was funny.
Hillsbury Family Farms, in reviewing the county's proposed ordinance, I want to start with something that became very clear during the recent Poverty Flats cannabis appeal before the Board of Supervisors on December ninth of twenty-twenty-five. Supervisor Sabatia made an important point, right now, CDD is operating on internal policies rather than ordinance. Staff claim their goal is to align the ordinance with state law, yet they continue enforcing unofficial rules that are nowhere in the ordinance or supported by state law. This is particularly concerning regarding the proposed use of warrants, live scan results, and background checks as automatic disqualifying factors. The draft ordinance provides no pathway to appeal a live scan disqualification, nor does it clarify whether applicants may request reconsideration from Sheriff Bingham despite CDD directing me to do so or risk revocation. Any fair regulatory framework must include due process and an opportunity to correct or challenge disqualifications, especially when the information may be outdated, inaccurate, or legally invalid. The ordinance also needs to address expunged records. State law recognizes expungements and allow individuals with expunged convictions to obtain employment and licensing, including in cannabis. County staff acknowledges that a path forward exists, yet in practice, applicants like my former business partner have been denied that pathway forward, both by CDD and the Sheriff's Department. And the Sheriff's Department should be present here to clearly define the evidence of rehabilitation, and to ensure the public that court-issued expungements are recognized by both the Sheriff's Department and CDD. Page five, lines twenty-six to twenty-eight are vague about who within the Sheriff's Office notifies CDD, what information is shared, and how it may be used. In my review of internal emails, CDD Director has labeled applicants such as myself as criminals before any verified background determination was made available by the Sheriff's Office. This creates bias and raises defamation concerns, and underscores the need for clear rules on information handling, confidentiality, and county discretion. While county states, county often states that live scan information is confidential, in my company's experience, a former owner's live scan result was disclosed publicly, and their social security number was posted earlier this year. This demonstrates a serious lapse in safeguarding sensitive applicant information. This shows a gap in policy. County must prevent unauthorized requests, protect privacy, and ensure compliance within state law. At the state level, disclosure of prior arrests is voluntary, and arrest-only information cannot be used as disqualifying factor. Applicants may also provide context or documentation, yet the county is moving towards a system where arrests and background checks become the grounds for denial, contradicting state policy, and disproportionately harming people of color, and conflicting with the racial justice act. I also want to make the board aware that ag workers are classified under IWC Order thirteen of fourteen, and right now cannabis workers are classified under Industrial Work Order Number Four, which defines working hours and overtimes, which are very different than the ag worker hours and overtime, and hours for overtime. We need a modern and equitable ordinance that should align with state law, and respect rehabilitation, and expungements, and protect applicants' rights, and provide a transparent appeal process going forward when they have.
And could you just please state your first and last name for the record one more time?
Skylar LeWah, Hillsbury Family Farms.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll take our next hand in the Zoom room.
Caroline Hillman.
Caroline, please state your first and last name for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, it's Carolyn Hillman, Austin Farm, Lake County. Thank you, Commissioners, for today, and I'm commenting today on two gaps that I see in the current draft ordinance that need to be attention before it moves forward. First, the county needs to provide a clear impact analysis of the proposed setbacks. As written, the new setbacks appear likely to make a significant number of existing licensed sites and pending applications non-viable. Before recommending adoption, I'm asking that the commission to request staff to quantify how many currently licensed cultivation and processing sites would no longer meet the new setbacks, how many applications already deemed complete will lose eligibility, and the esteemed, and the estimated loss in canopy jobs, cannabis tax revenue, if those sites are forced to close or withdraw. We already know the legal cannabis sector contributes meaningful revenue to the county, and if setbacks eliminate a large portion of compliant operators, that will directly reduce revenue and destabilize the regulated market. This is a major policy change, and the community deserves mapped data and numbers, not assumptions. Second, the ordinance needs explicit grandfathering for existing and deemed complete projects. Operators with active county permits and state licenses have already invested heavily in compliance, SEQA, infrastructure, and seasonal labor. So to have applicants whose files were accepted as complete under the current Article twenty-seven rules, applying new setbacks to those projects retroactively would undermine reliance on existing approvals, estrand significant investment, increase the risk of vested rights and disputes, unintentionally drive compliant operators out of the legal framework, and a straightforward grandfathering clause should allow all current active permitted sites in good standing to grandfathering clause should allow all current active permitted sites in good standing to continue operating under their approved site plans, all deemed complete applications to continue review under the rules in place at the time they were accepted. This keeps the ordinance fair, avoids immediate economic harm, and prevents destabilizing in the licensed operators county has already vetted. And in closing, I'm just asking that the Planning Commission to direct staff to produce a setback impact, impact analysis and to add clear grandfathering language before forwarding this ordinance to the board. And thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
Chair Chavez, I just wanted to add to that, that there is a whole article in our zoning code that already handles what are grandfathering, which is, we call it legal nonconforming uses. So changes to the ordinance now would not impact already approved projects.
Thank you for that.
Though it could limit their expansion. So we do have stuff on that.
So just to clarify, it would not impact existing projects or even projects that are currently deemed, deemed complete? Thank you.
Oh, it could, it could impact any projects that are not approved yet.
Okay.
Commissioners.
Pre-approved, yeah, projects prior to approval do not have any entitlements.
Correct. That's what I was going to say.
So that would apply to.
Word from council first.
So, yeah, no, Director Turner is correct. Entitlements do not attach to any land use project until the permit is approved. And at that point, traditional standard real estate law allows for that use to continue because a person relied on the laws at the time that they were approved, unless and until they want to make a change, in which case they would have to come back and reapply for an amendment. And then they, at that point, they would have to meet the standards that are current at the time that they reapply. So it wouldn't be an issue for anyone unless and until they wanted to change their use. And that's true for any use under the zoning ordinance.
So my question was not necessarily land use, I understand that, but if, for instance, the change in employee verification of legal status, would that then be potentially available for change and not grandfathered in on the, on the new annual review of the particular project?
No, that's, that, that would be performed as a part of the annual compliance or annual review. That would still apply.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. But just to be clear, to make sure I understood your question and I answered you accurately, let's say we've got an approved project right now, and they, they're sending in, we, we check, we double check their list of employees for our records for background checks every year. If we only needed to do it for full-time employees, that would also apply to the already approved projects. We would not hold them to having all employee background checks. Because that's more of a procedural thing.
You did, thank you.
Okay, okay.
All right, do we have any other speakers on Zoom? Okay, desk guest, please state your first and last name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope you guys can hear me. I'm trying to keep my voice down and speak loud enough for you. My name is Angela Amaral, and I'm gonna, I would like to first off point out if you guys could consider using the speaker timer display that's on the dais in front of Chair Chavez. It's helpful for the public to know for time management purposes. But yeah, and with regards to the background checks, request to change to full-time employees instead of all employees. And to echo the concerns of the commissioners, does the county have a definition for a full-time employee or will one be included here? I don't believe that the state has a specific definition for full-time employee. Would this be, for example, for anyone working more than 30 hours a week? Another thing during the topic, during the topic of background checks at the Code of Meetings, law enforcement was present and did request to maintain the current requirement of background checks for all employees. Also during those meetings, law enforcement officials expressed that they do not, that they do get people that fail the background checks for serious matters and are denied approval to work in the industry. Ultimately, Code of voted to reduce it to full-time employees only. Now I'm going to be putting on my other hat as an elected committee member, speaking on behalf of Double Eagle Ranch Property Owners Association with regards to the exclusion zones. Double Eagle Ranch POA would like to continue its advocacy in requesting that the Double Eagle subdivision be included in the exclusion zone area. For some quick background, going back to 2016, during the original creation of Article 27, county staff had Double Eagle Ranch listed in the exclusion zone area draft recommendation. Then, a person that does not own property nor reside in Double Eagle requested to have the ranch removed from the proposed exclusion zone area. County staff obliged this request and the ranch was removed. Double Eagle has consistently advocated to be listed within the exclusion zone for almost five years now. The first project ever denied by the Planning Commission was within Double Eagle Ranch Property Owners Association because the first finding for approval could not be met. Double Eagle Ranch is respectfully requesting once again to be listed within the exclusion zone as it was the original recommendation of county staff before a request to remove it was made by someone that is not a resident nor a property owner, and it was ultimately granted. Please assist Double Eagle Ranch in preserving the area for property owners' and residents' well-being and include it within the exclusion zone for the revised ordinance. On behalf of the owners and residents, I feel very thankful for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. I guess I'm looking for some direction from Director Turner regarding a request like that. Would that have to be made to CDD?
I was part of the original work for, for the article. I was not aware of Double Eagle ever being listed on that. Should the planning, it's not really on today's agenda, but should the Planning Commission want to make some kind of recommendation? I would put that in the staff report.
I would recommend that Director Turner use her judgment.
Do we have any other speakers for this item on Zoom? Okay, I'm going to take one more look here in chambers to see if anyone wishes to speak. Public input for this item is still open, and I see nobody in the chamber, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
A comment on that, the last caller that came in is that, yeah, my recommendation would be to do a little research on that and find out whether that is reasonable. So, and then a couple of things before we close out this topic is just as we move forward, and it doesn't have to do with the suggested changes for the ordinance today, but in moving forward, as per the, the project that we heard earlier this morning, I think it's important to make sure that we do biological studies, and I am going to check that report and find out the dates that I missed from that project earlier today. But, but anyway, that we do those biological studies and water studies at the critical times of the season or, you know, valid times of the, the season. And then also has been brought up a number of different times by this body when we've discussed cannabis, is a consistent method of evaluating water usage. Yep, those are the only two things I have to add for the future.
So I just have a question on, just some clarity. It was a couple of meetings ago, you had brought a proposal about doing some in-depth into odor and water, and you had a proposal from, I want to say Playland, but I know that's not their name. Playworks? Plays, plays, Playworks, is that who they are?
Oh, Playworks. They, they did a.
Right, they, they made a proposal, and you were going to take that to the board. Remind us whatever happened with that, because that is also part of, could be potentially part of our conversations here, because it was odor and water and roads, I think, is my recollection, or a couple of criteria that, to, to do a more in-depth study for information, and you were going to take that to the board, which I certainly assume you did. I just don't recall what the results were of that.
I did, yes, thank you. I took that to the board, and they are interested in programmatic EIR regarding water and not specific to cannabis, but just all water use. But they did not have interest in draft PIR on odor impacts. They said that the increased setbacks were going to be the way that they addressed those.
Okay. So, so there's potential moving forward with an in-depth study at some point, should bring us out more information on that, if that's going to happen?
They also wanted me to look into possible other options to deal for odor mitigation, and so that will come to you in the future.
Okay.
Probably as part of Article 73.
Okay, thank you for the reminder of what happened there.
I'd like to add on the roads issue, if you can make a recommendation about that. A number of times, we've had lots of neighbors or other road users complain about or be worried about increased traffic, and collectively, it's an issue. Each individual project adds to road issues. We saw this with the most recent Wellness Ranch, I believe, and then there was one up in High Valley where there was a truck that got stuck and blocked access. So I don't know how, how the county could do that, but I think it needs to be done. And so I'd, I'd hope that you could recommend to the Board of Supervisors as part of this that the collective impact of remote location projects is having an effect on our, our roads, and that needs to be addressed by the county.
Also, the interim Public Works Director Lars Ewing will make a presentation on the County Road Maintenance Program to this commission in February.
And he's seated in the room.
Yay! And you can see how thrilled he is. Yes. All right, I think I have some good recommendations then. Thank you very much. Chair Chavez, could we take a five-minute break? And then when we reconvene, could we possibly do the final, the, the general plan conformity determination item? Because I'd like to send support staff out, and I don't need them for the last housing element item.
Okay, how about we do 10 minutes and come back at four?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The project does include removal of approximately thirty trees within this area. That would be replanted at a three to one ratio for oaks and a two to one ratio for other natives. There would also be landscaping, as shown in green, an open grass playfield area, pedestrian pathways connecting all of the amenities together. Water services would be provided via a new connection to Cobb Area Water County District. The project would continue to utilize the existing PG&E electricity connection and the existing septic system in Leach Field. Similar to other county parks, the proposed project would be unmanned with the hours posted from dawn to dusk and daily trash collection and cleanup services would be provided. Per Article Two of the zoning ordinance, the County of Lake Development Projects are exempt from the zoning code, meaning that a use permit is not required. However, the proposed use is allowed within the zoning districts noted, and the proposal does meet the setback in height requirements within the code. So just wanted to point that out. According to Government Code 65402, which is all of these lengthy words on the slide here, for county development projects, an analysis of the project's conformity with the general plan must be completed. So that is one of the items that is before your commission today. In compliance with the state regulations, staff has identified the goals and policies from the Lake County General Plan, Cobb Mountain Area Plan, that support the proposed project. So getting into those a bit more, there's a detailed analysis, starting on page eleven of your staff report. For brevity in time, I'll just hit sort of the ones that are most applicable to the project. Most policies pertaining to development of community parks and trails are in the open space conservation and recreation element of the general plan, that would be Chapter Nine. This slide contains a list of the goals and policies from that element that are most applicable and supported by the project. These policies emphasize providing community parks with a variety of opportunities for multi-user groups and trail connectivity. Consistent with these policies, the project proposes a variety of trails with different terrain and lengths. The project would also provide connectivity to pedestrian and bicycle paths in the area, an adjacent golf course, and educational signage points along Kelsey Creek and Ridgeline Trails. Of particular note is Policy OSC 6.3, which contains siting criteria for new parks. And the proposed project meets that criteria because it is twelve acres in size, is located adjacent to the other commercial, residential, and recreational uses. The site is located at an intersection of two main streets, which is identified as one of the siting criterias, has adequate vehicle access, bicycle and pedestrian access, and is not located on an asbestos occurring site. So those are all part of the siting criteria under 6.3. Last thing I wanted to note about the open space element is that there are goals and policies related to preservation of biological resources, riparian areas, and policies in that nature. The project does meet those goals and policies as it's designed to develop the main park facilities in that western corner that is generally flat with an existing parking lot and has had development previously, as opposed to the remaining portion of the site, which is much more steep and vegetated. So while the project does not propose to remove trees within that primary portion, the, or I'm sorry, while the project has been designed to avoid trees to the extent possible, as I mentioned, there would be some tree removal, and staff has worked with CDFW, Fish and Wildlife, I should say, on those tree planting ratios and has landed on a three to one ratio. Additionally, bird nesting surveys are required, and additional tree surveys are required for those future phases. That would include more trail development. And of course, the county would also obtain all regulatory permits from Fish and Wildlife, for example, prior to commencing any of that work along the creek. So as far as general plan conformity, Chapter Three, which is the land use chapter, also contains policies related to compatibility of siting parks near other recreation and residential uses. In this instance, that is the case, as I mentioned, there's residential to the east as well as other facilities for recreation in the adjacent parcels. The project is also consistent with Chapter Five, Public Facilities and Services of the General Plan. Mostly, this chapter of the general plan contains policies related to schools and libraries and like police and fire stations. But public facilities, in this case, could also include county maintained parks. So the policies are related to siting them next to major thoroughfares. As mentioned before, this is on the corner of two main roads and one highway, Gulf Road and Highway 175. It also has those connections to the other bike path in the area. Lastly, the project also addresses priorities that were identified in the 2024 Lake County Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan that designates Cobb Mountain as one of the areas needing an additional park. All right, moving to the area plan, since that is part of the general plan conformity on the projects in the Cobb Mountain Area Plan, and the proposed project is consistent with the noted needs, objective, and policies in the Cobb Mountain Area Plan as it helps address the noted issue in that plan of needing to provide additional recreation opportunities in Cobb. And specifically, the project supports the needs identified in Policy 5.14D, 2, 4, and 5 that express the need for community parks adjacent to riparian areas, multipurpose trails, and facilities along Highway 175. Moving along to the environmental analysis for the project, there was an initial study prepared and was circulated for public review in August of this year, ending in September. Comments received during the sequel public review period included only comments from the state water board. They made comments regarding the need for a public water service permit if you're going to have a certain amount of connections or persons drinking from that fountain, as I understand. So based on feedback received from the water board, the county modified it to propose connecting to the Cobb Area County Water District instead of drilling a new well, which was originally proposed. The water agency did provide a will serve letter, and that's included in your agency comments in the attachment. And the IS was revised as necessary to address those changes from moving from a new well to connecting to Cobb Water. The changes were minor in nature and resulted in less impacts than previously identified drilling the new well. So as such, the changes did not necessitate recirculation of that M and D, but it is redlined, just for transparency in your attachments. Biological-technical report, an arborist report with a tree inventory, as well as a cultural resource report, was prepared for the project. And the county did work with the Middletown Rancheria, as well as Big Valley Pomo, Band of Pomo Indians in the early design phase, starting back in 2023, I believe. And we also sent out AB 52 notifications, as required under SEQA. We did not get a request for a formal consultation under AB 52, but as I mentioned, the county has been working closely with particularly Middletown Rancheria. Also wanted to note, as I mentioned previously, that the county worked with CDFW regarding those tree mitigation ratios, as well as Caltrans and Public Works regarding parking and access that you may see in the agency comments. So all issues raised have been addressed or will be during the future phases of the project. So based on the analysis, staff finds that the project is in conformance with the general plan and the area plan and has been analyzed appropriately in conformance with SEQA. And findings for approval for the general plan conformity and the M and D, or initial study, mitigated negative declaration are included on pages nineteen and twenty of your staff report. And that concludes my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sure, I just had a quick question regarding the application for the Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding tree mitigation measures. So if there was no proposal to replant or to get the ratio for the three to one that was agreed to, would that apply, would the rule apply to have that one fine that they have? Like, they have like a specific number that if you exceed a certain amount of inches in diameter, I forgot, it was like $25,000 fee?
Yeah, per tree, you mean for the compensa- compens- I'm out of my brain right now, com- money. To pay, compensatory, I cannot say that right now, to pay into the fund. Yes, that's correct, that's another option. In this scenario, we did talk about that as an option, but went with the tree planting. If possible, the county is proposing to plant onsite, but there's also another site at the Middletown Park, I believe it's called, that is already being used by Caltrans, and so that's another potential location.
Yeah, and I think once you have the whole, you know, design for the park, there's going to be water, as you mentioned, there. So implementing that, the replanting of those trees onsite or wherever happens, like, it's not difficult to do. I think, you know, I was just wondering, because that did come up in one of the previous projects, that they could either opt out to pay the fee or to do the replanting. So, yeah, that makes sense. I had another question, but I'll come back to me.
So run through the different, and the different phases, what is your proposed tree removal?
Well, maybe if the commission would allow me, I can provide a little bit, just a little bit more information from this. First off, I appreciate you taking this up slightly out of order. I do have a couple of consultants that are on Zoom. They've been available since the time died at nine fifty. So I'm not sure if they're still available, but if we can promote them, just in case we need to have any questions answered. We do have Jessman Lett and Christine Fukasawa, who may be available. But I would only need to tap into them if we get into the technical questions. A couple of things that I think are worth noting, and Michelle did a wonderful job of touching on the project from the planning side. You know, some of the history on this project, without going into everything, there's a few things that I think are worth noting. One is the funding, Michelle talked about grant funded. That is, that is true, and I don't, but I don't want to be misleading there. We, the county received a, received a grant for funding for the acquisition phase of the project, which is now behind us. So we purchased the property using a state Habitat Conservation Fund grant. And now, for the development phase, we have a grant application submitted to the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund Program. We made it through the first round, and through, I'll almost say through the second round. It looks very optimistic. A part of that is what your commission is considering now, and that is, you know, checking the box is what I'll say for SEQA. That's, you know, do we have that? So that's going to be a critical part of us maintaining our competitiveness for the grant, which has been submitted, and they're reviewing applications now. Another part, you know, the consultants can touch on the technical studies that have already been completed, an archaeological surveys report, a biological survey report, botanists, or at least on the biological side, looking at the trees that are out there. And I'll certainly defer to them for any of that technical nature for the studies. But this is, you know, this is not just a site plan that we prepared, and we don't have the background behind it. There's been quite a lot of work done. And on the tree planting specifically, as your commission is probably aware, on behalf of the county, the Public Services Department manages about two dozen parks around the county, thousands of acres, one of which is about a hundred acre park down in Middletown, Trailside Park, that Caltrans is currently using for replanting in a similar fashion, mitigation for their highway widening project, or actually projects now along Highway twenty, actually, I'm sorry, Highway 175 and 29 possibly, but it's two separate projects. So it's tried and true for Caltrans using Trailside Park as a replanting location. For them, it was, I think it's about twelve acres of trees. So we're talking thousands and thousands of trees being planted at Trailside Park. So this would be a bit of a drop in the bucket for replanting. So I think I'll end there and either refer to Christine or Jesse online, but happy to field any questions.
When you say replanting, how many potential trees are going to be removed?
At a high end, I think we're looking at thirty at most, and we're going to do our best. I mean, for a park, we want to keep trees. I mean, the property is twelve, thirteen acres, give or take. The area of development where we would need to remove some trees would be primarily for the parking lot, and that's, you know, kind of hard to get around the trees for that. But at a high end, thirty, and I think that's even on a very high end.
And so those trees, are they, are they mature trees? Are they huge, or to the point made, are they big earth trees or little guys?
Thank you. I should have noted during the presentation that it does specify on the site plan that trees over twenty-five DBH will be retained. And as Director Ewing noted, they are going to absolutely make the best efforts to not remove any trees that don't need to be removed. It is a park. We won't know the final numbers and location until the final grading plans are prepared. But, so yes, there are a lot of trees that will still be preserved.
And those other phases will come back to us, or?
Probably defer to Michelle there, but the phases were presented so that we can, for our planning purposes, so we knew where we're going. The funding will dictate the phases. If we are successful in the grant award that we applied for, then we may be doing a number of phases, not immediately, but once we get the grant award. It's a federal grant, and we have to wait for a variety of federal appropriation timeframe. So it may not be 2026 when we start, it may be 2027, but it may be that there are multiple phases that start, you know, in, say, 2027. If we don't get the grant, then we will do our best to, pardon the pun, but to cob together some funds and make some progress on the park so that we can open it up to the public sooner rather than later. And that was the idea behind the phased approach of that developed area. Hey, let's get a playground there, let's get the parking lot there, let's get the restroom and everything else for that, what I would say you're a community park, as opposed to a bridge over the creek or the trails up in the area. So we're looking to wisely plan out what we believe we would do if we didn't have funds right up front.
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
I can answer the question of whether or not it would come back to your commission. So it is proposed as a phased project. The general plan conformity covers all of those phases, as well as the SEQA. The only reason it would come back to the commission is if something substantially changed that would result in a big difference, maybe, in that, that we could no longer support the general plan conformity. That is before you today, if it gets approved. So just wanted to clarify that for the record as well.
I wanted to make a comment, number one, I'm very excited about this project. Thank you very much for presenting it and for moving forward on it. So I also wanted to share with my fellow commissioners that this is, number one, Trailside Park was a park that was devastated by the fire in 2015. So that's one of the reasons why somebody used it for replanting trees, because all the trees, they were lost. So it was, yeah, just like flattened completely. And this particular area up on Cobb where this park is, I'm very familiar with this location as well. This is an area that was not affected by the valley fire. And actually, could, you know, while I prefer the preservation of trees, but on the other hand, this is also an area that could use a little bit of thinning, so for fire safety as well. So I think, you know, that balance there is very beneficial for the area.
Forest management is important as well.
Yeah, and if, to that end, what the commissioner mentioned there, prior to the county taking ownership of the property, it was privately owned, and there were some tree clearing done, I believe it was through a contractor under PG&E going in, just doing general maintenance, but for that, to that end, because there, it is heavily forested. You know, we're not talking about, you know, thirty trees that we propose to remove on a property that has thirty-one trees, right? We're talking about thousands and thousands of trees. And while the developed area that was shown up there, we zoomed in on that, you know, that is, you know, maybe an acre, half an acre or so among a twelve or thirteen acre site that is, you know, heavily forested.
Thank you for that clarification, and they're not thirty-one, and you're going to remove thirty. Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions before I open up public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and open public comment for this item. I see nobody in the chamber, so we'll just double check on Zoom. Nobody on Zoom, nobody in chambers, we'll close public comment for this item and bring it back to the commission for discussion or action.
I have no more questions. Want to make the motion? Oh, it is?
It's actually, it's in District Five, it is. But, and forgive me, it was the commissioner that recused herself, and I presume that she represented the district where this is housed, but that would be, yeah.
The commissioner, Miley Field, may have recused herself because I know she has a home right there. She owns a home that's right, almost connected to this parcel.
Correct, and I made the leap of faith that she represented that district, that she lived there, and so that was a mistake on my part, but it is correct, it is in District Five.
So I'm happy. It's on five. Okay, so I will make a motion. I move the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigative monitoring reporting program prepared for the Cobb Community Park Project, PL 2596, proposed by the Lake County Public Service Department, located at sixteen five four zero, State Highway 175 Cobb, APM 01305604, based on the findings in the staff report dated December eleventh, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, and two absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. Second, I move that the Planning Commission finds the Cobb Community Park Project, proposed by the Lake County Public Service Department, located at sixteen five four zero. Is that the same address? No, I'm just kidding. State Highway 175 Cobb, APM 01305604, is in conformity with the Lake County General Plan and as required under the California Code of Regulation, Section 56402, with the findings in the staff report dated December eleventh, 2025.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, and two absent, the motion passes. Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission's decision or recommendation, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to our item that we had swapped. So we're going to go back to Item 6C. It was our nine thirty-five AM public hearing. Consideration of Ordinance to Amend Chapter Twenty-One, Articles Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Eighteen, Nineteen, Twenty-Seven, and Sixty-Eight of the Lake County Zoning Code to implement general plan sixth cycle housing element policies, HE thirty-eight, thirty-eight, I don't know if that was a typo, HE fifty-nine, HE sixty, HE sixty-one, HE seventy-one, HE seventy-two, and HE seventy-three, and a policy for implementation of HE six. All right, we have the Community Development Department with a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Director Turner. I mean, Muriya Turner, Director of Community Development. Similar to our last meeting, when I think the commission remembers, we, I presented you HE fifty-eight. We have, these are the remaining outstanding implementation tasks that are required for us to finish up this year as part of our sixth cycle housing element. It, a number, they address affordable housing. Some of them are syncing with state law, so we're just coming into compliance with state law. And similar to last meeting, where we talked about how you didn't really have much option to not approve these, it's kind of similar on this option because the housing element, the sixth cycle housing element, did already go through the Planning Commission for a recommendation of approval, got approved by the board, certified by the state, and now they're just following up and making sure that they're holding us accountable to implementing some of the tasks that we said we were going to do. And so that's what's before you today. We had another table also, in an attempt to make it quicker and easier for you to digest. I hope that that didn't lead to the same sort of confusion that happened with the Article Twenty-seven. So we'll just go through these. The first one, HE six, is to develop a policy for expediting permits, qualifying permits for, with significant portion of units restricted to low, very low, or moderate income households. Now, this did not require a zoning amendment because it's a policy. So that was Attachment One, the policy, draft policy before you, which talks about how the different ways that we will expedite these projects, a faster turnaround time on processing, as well as the pre-development meetings that we usually always hold already to help the developer understand from multiple agencies and departments what we will be looking for in their application. Our E permitting system, which is contributing to the efficiency of our permit processing system overall. And then, I think, lastly, the, oh, right, the building division. We're increasing our number of, sorry, we are looking for, anyway, we're preparing ourselves to increase that housing library of plans that'll be available to include duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, I think. That will also help to expedite if they don't have to design their own plans. Next one, county additional residential development and community commercial areas, or our C two areas. This article, currently, we are very restricted in what can be developed for mixed use. But as the commission already knows, in Lake County 2050, there was very strong support countywide for more mixed use options. And so this actually, this amendment helps with that. Though we will be taking a deeper dive into it as a result of Lake County 2050. Next one, zoning ordinance to allow supportive housing by right in commercial or other zoning designations that have access to support services. This is to come into compliance with state law. State law, I think it was a few years ago, so we're a little behind the curve, but a few years ago, they required that supportive and transitional housing have no more requirements put on them than a normal, just any old building permit, any other residential development. Next one, zoning ordinance shall be amended, oh, for maximum stay for a hundred and eighty days in emergency shelters, as well as doing away with that buffer that we had, saying shelters couldn't be any closer than like three hundred feet apart, again, coming into compliance with state law. Zoning ordinance amended to accommodate ag, employee housing of six to twelve units or up to thirty-six beds in all zones permitting agriculture as a permitted use. I don't think this was state law, but this was in our housing element. So that touched on a number of different zoning districts, the timberland preserve, rural residential, and rural lands, and ag. Next one, zoning ordinance amended, oh, so this does address, yeah, this is to amend the second story or higher for commercial mixed use, like a commercial accessory. for commercial mixed use, like a commercial accessory residential use. This one, we remove the minor use permit to make it a use by right. Next item, county will amend to remove the minor use permit requirement for multifamily developments over 20 or more units. So we went ahead and did that in Articles 12 and 19, so multifamily residential as well as community commercial. And then, again, for state law, making revisions to allow low barrier navigation centers. So that is located in C2. That concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Just say, the HE 71s, say them one more time.
Sure, go back, let me go back. Okay, so currently, our zoning code allows for very restrictive second story development for like a residential, like an apartment over a pizza place kind of things. We're doing away with the minor use permit that's required for that. It's consistent with allowing for more mixed use in our community commercial.
Okay.
By not requiring a discretionary use permit for that one.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
My pleasure. I went through it fast, I'm sorry. I'm trying to be as expedient as possible. But I do entertain any question, or I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Also, Michelle Iris was very strong staff support on this item, so she's here in case there's something I don't know the answer to.
The question that I have in regard, it's not on this chart here and stuff, but for agriculture, I believe on ag zoned parcels, there is not, residential is not allowed beyond the one home site.
Currently, for agriculture, you can have your one primary residence. According to state law, you can then also have your ADU or your JADU and/or your JADU. But then additional residential uses of ag parcels have to be directly tied to an existing commercial ag use.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we are more restrictive, so it's not like you could put in a hundred, you know, 100 unit apartment there.
Right. Thank you.
Yes. I feel like I should be filling this line.
And what action are you looking for?
I'm looking for a recommendation of approval.
Okay. So moved.
You may want to have a little public input if there's any.
Oh, yes, you're right. I'm sorry.
There's nobody here.
All right, well, we'll open a public comment for this item. There's nobody here in the chambers, so we'll take a look in the Zoom room. And there are no hands in the Zoom room, so we'll close public input and bring it back to the commission. I believe there was a.
Okay, well, let me back up then, or whatever. I do have one comment or question from a green sheet or information that we received. So what type, a question that I have is what type of oversight will ensure that the units remain restricted? So, or, you know, I guess that implies to be used.
That's not usually handled by the county. That is a deed, what is it called? I don't even know the title of it, but they sign like a covenant to keep it in affordable for, it's usually the normal duration of about 50 years. And we do track them because that's part of our housing element, is that we stay aware of those and that we're making efforts to encourage renewals and remaining within affordable housing contracts.
And how does a project become a qualifying project?
Or are you looking at a particular one? Well, I can just tell you offhand, for an ag-related program, it would be part of their project description and part of their resulting permit. So, or for income restrictions, that is also part. We usually see those coming before we ever get our application because they're cobbling together different grant sources specific to low-income housing, and so they need data from us even before we see an application on those. Yeah, they can't just come up and be like, hey, I just want to build some low-income housing. There are all these different steps that they do before they ever get a building permit before us.
If I could add, there's, it also is tied back to the definitions that we're adding and the development standards that are included in these updates.
Okay, great. And then, just for the sake of clarification for anyone who may be listening or who might listen to this later, can you clarify what being allowed by right means?
Yes, thank you. That means it's ministerial, or also means it only needs a building permit. It does not require any conditional use permits or consequently any conditional like development or design review permits. It would be handled on a ministerial. They go straight to building permit.
Or SEQA.
Similar to a single-family residence.
So it's by right by ownership? Thank you.
Yeah, and ministerial projects by state law do not require SEQA.
Good. Then I am ready to move. Did we close public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. But I'm ready to move that we accept this as presented.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
By accept as present, what I take that to mean is you support a recommendation of approval through the board of supervisors for its adoption of that ordinance. Would that be?
Yes.
Excellent.
I'll second that, yes.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None, and two absent. The motion passes. And there's no disclaimer at the bottom of this one, so. I believe that concludes our meeting today. Thank you all that joined in, tuned in on Zoom, and thank you, Director.
If I could just do one little quick thing. I noticed on Tuesday's agenda for the board that was just posted, at 9:30, there is a county road pavement work plan for 2026 through 2030. So that might be a quick way for you to get a precursor of the presentation that Lars is going to do too, if you want to attend. That'd be great.
What time?
At 9:30. And at our next meeting, if it's not as marathon a meeting as this one was, we will start the normal department update thing that we're going to do of what you have coming up next meeting, because I know you guys were interested in having a sort of a.
That would be helpful.
We'll do that next meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, team.
All right, so meeting adjourned at 4:43.
Thank you, Pam.